Good afternoon. Want to call to meeting the December 8, 2021, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and want to acknowledge that our Chairperson Supervisor Frost is en route, and so I'll take it off, but she'll be here shortly, and we'll continue through the rest of the afternoon. Want to welcome all of the folks who've joined us, both in person today, but those that are joining us via either phone or other communication means. And with that, then, I'm going to turn to the clerk to make the announcements, and we'll call the roll, establish a quorum, do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask that you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance when you get done with the announcements, and then we'll go right into today's agenda.
Okay, so I'll establish a quorum, and then I'll go into the statement. Supervisor Desmond Kennedy, Serna, and Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, December 12, at 8:00 p.m. on Channel 14, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thanks. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, may I read the meeting announcement?
Yes, please do that.
Okay.
There's some very helpful instructions for those who may be on the phone or tuning in, wish to address the board, so please do that. Thank you, ma'am clerk.
Thank you. The Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting, in person, telephonically, or in writing. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is broadcast live and open to in-person attendance. The county requires a face mask or face shield while inside the county's administration building, which includes the board chambers and hearing rooms, and recommends social distancing. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. Public comments will be taken in the order of in-person comments, and then comments by phone. If you are making a public comment in person, a face mask or face shield is required, and social distancing is recommended while inside the chambers or in hearing rooms 1 and 2. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis inside the chambers, and overflow seating is available in hearing rooms 1 and 2. If there are no seats available inside the chambers or overflow room, please form a line in the designated area and wait for your turn to make a public comment. Please complete a speaker request form and give it to clerk staff. A separate speaker request form is required for each agenda item or topic that is not on the posted agenda. When the public comments are open, three names will be called at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium, inside the chambers, and wait for your turn to make a comment. If you are making a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call, to be placed in queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is very much appreciated. The clerk will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each Agenda Item Q will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public will be given two minutes to make a comment, and are limited to making one public comment per Agenda Item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while you're making your comment. If you need an accommodation pursuant to Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance, or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net, B-O-A-R-D-C-L-E-R-K at saccounty.net. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and appreciate putting that into the record, and we certainly encourage participation in today's meeting. And with that, we're going to jump right into the agenda. We don't have any items to be continued. We're going to go through and hear all five. Is that right, Madam Clerk? Okay. So if you'll go ahead and call the first item, please.
Yes. Item number one is to conduct Truth Act forum pursuant to Government Code Section 7283.1, response to immigration and customs enforcement access to individuals in SAC County jails.
Great. And as I see Sheriff Jones approaching the podium, I just wanted maybe turn to county council real quickly, since the memo came over, and if you could maybe just describe the background, if there's any to put on the record, Ms. Travis, before we take Mr. Jones' presentation, and we have some other presentations as well, so.
Sure. So you're here today to hold the public forum and receive and consider public comment on the Truth Act, which is Government Code 7283.1, and the board is required to do that in instances where the sheriff has had interactions with immigration and custom control as defined by the statute, and I know that the sheriff is here to address that topic today, and so I'll turn it over to him.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Ms. Travis. And just with note that we're going to hear from Sheriff Jones, take any questions from board members, and then we do have, in line of presentations, we have under public comment, I have representatives from the American Civil Liberties Union who have ordered that they'd like to do presentations, allowed a 15 minutes to the clerk's office to do that, and then we'll take public comment from folks either in chambers or certainly on the phone. So with that, Sheriff Jones, welcome. Good to see you here with us today, and I'll turn the podium over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The hearing that's required will be short and sweet, and we'll get it set up here. Thank you. This is the Truth Act forum. Again, just keeping in mind, this is for 2020, even though we're now at the end of 2021, they're a year behind, so this will cover the calendar year 2020. This is not required necessarily, but certainly worth going over, as I do every year, that we do not have any coordinated activities or enforcement with ICE, and didn't in calendar 2020. We never inquire with anyone we deal with about immigration status. We never verify status of arrestees or detainees. We might ask if they were born in a foreign country or citizens of another country to comply with legally required consular notifications, but we never, for example, if someone says they were born in Mexico, we never further inquire about their status here in this country. Likewise, we don't track, monitor, or keep stats on those folks. Main jail and Rio Customs Correctional Centers are two points of contact we could have with ICE for the purposes of this forum. In 2020, there were no ICE detainees held at the Rio Customs Correctional Center, as this board recalls. In 2018, this board decided to terminate or not renew the ICE contract for which we had a contract for ICE for housing of detainees, and within eight days, we had all the ICE detainees out of our custody in Sacramento County. So since that date, we've had no one in sole ICE custody. In 2020, we received 280 immigration detainees from ICE, which is called the DHS Form I-247. The holds, as they are routinely, were entered into the electronic system, the records, and immediately canceled out. So in other words, although they were marked as received and filed, they had no legal effect. They didn't keep anyone in custody one second longer than they otherwise would have been. In 2020, as you can see, we had no interviews from ICE at either our main jail or Rio Customs Correctional Centers. They did not come in and conduct one interview. By contrast, other law enforcement interviews, everybody else except ICE, who are still allowed to come in our facility, as you can see at the main jail, there was over 2,000, the Rio Customs Correctional Center, 156. There were five notifications that qualified under the statute for us to notify ICE of the offense, to see if they wanted to, whatever they wanted to do with them. Three of them were picked up by ICE. Two of them were, you can see the number and the charges there, qualifying offenses. Two were not picked up. They were chosen not to be picked up by ICE. There's the offenses, and of course, they were immediately released, at least on that hold. If they had currently pending charges, they'd be held on the local charges, but ICE, the hold of the detainees or their qualifying charges had no bearings on the length of time they would spend in custody otherwise.
Sheriff, could I just ask you, before you leave that slide, so again, Lisa's board member doesn't have familiar with those penal code sections are, one's vehicle code, or two vehicle code?
Oh, sorry. Going back, the first one, 2352B is felony DUI. 288 is sex offense, and 273.5 is domestic violence.
Okay.
And again, the 2352 felony DUI.
Okay, thank you.
And that is it. I told you it'd be short and sweet, so I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay. Turn back to Chair Frost, who's joined us, and thank you, Sheriff Jones.
Thank you, Vice Chair Natoli, for filling in for me. Sorry, I was a little late.
That's what vice chairs are for.
Supervisor Serna did have a comment.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here and for your presentation. I'm looking at, I think it's your third slide, where you made it clear that there's no coordinated activities enforcement with ICE, and this is, I think, probably the same slide, or a very similar slide, to the one that I think you presented last year, about the previous year, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So this tells us what you're not doing relative to any activities or communication in the context of ICE detention, and as it relates to the Truth Act, but is there anything at all, any other activities that aren't covered by Truth Act, where the sheriff's department is not coordinating, but, you know?
So I think I know what your question is.
Cooperating with ICE?
Yeah, and the answer is no. In fact, I just verified that this morning, seeing if they were on any task forces that we were also on, things like that, and we are not. We have HSI, which is Homeland Security Investigations, on our ICAC, our Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, but we have no task force where we would participate with ICE on.
So the totality of any type of cursory communication or cooperation as it relates to ICE is the SB 54 qualified notification?
Those five that I indicated. That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it. Please proceed.
Okay. I won't be sticking around for public comment, but Chief Deputy of Corrections, Matt Peterson, will be here if any questions or burning things come up that he can respond to. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, well, at this time, we do have some public comments, and we're scheduled to allow for one group. From time to time, we have a group that wants to make an organized public comment, and so we will be starting out with Erica Ramos, Rhonda Rios Kravitz, and Gabby Trejo, who will each have five minutes. And when you approach, if you can just give us your name and for the record, and...
Okay. We wanted to flag that we will be using our 15 minutes. I will take over the first, like, nine minutes, and then my counterpart to take over the rest of the minutes.
Of course. That's fine. I can just put it, we can just put you down for 15 and stop between speakers. How's that?
That works. Thank you.
Okay. When you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. My name is Erica Ramos, and I am a Legal Policy Assistant with the ACLU of Northern California. In my presentation, I will give you an overview of the public records our office obtained from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office in 2020 and 2021. I will start with an overview of the PRA records. There are three points we want to highlight for you today. The first, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office is engaging in systematic illegal notifications. Second, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office is systematically illegally transferring people into ICE custody. And third, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office record keeping results in the underreporting of ICE transfers. Engaging in illegal notifications. I want to start by explaining what notifications are allowed under SB 54. Unless a criminal carve-out applies, under SB 54, California law enforcement agencies are not allowed to provide information regarding a person's release date, or respond to requests for notification by providing release dates or other information, unless that information is available to the public. So to be clear, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office does not make time of release information available to the public. So in front of you, this is an email dated January 9, 2020, with an image of a stamp that says "ICE Log Stamp." It appears to be an email from a supervisor to subordinate officers regarding record keeping procedures for the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. This email directs staff to, quote, "log the time, the ICE agent you contacted, and put your name and badge number." It also states that if the inmate does not meet SB 54 qualification outside the gate, the booking sergeant must sign off on your ICE log entry. This appears to be direction from a higher officer instructing other officers on how to transfer people to ICE who are not SB 54 qualified, so long as the transfer occurs outside the gate of the jail. The, so, RCCC ICE logbook. The next two images are portions of the ICE logbook, where ICE was notified by the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office of a person's pending release. You will note that the county redacted some information, and we redacted other information to protect people's privacy. On this entry dated January 13, 2019, Sacramento County personnel called an ICE officer and informed him of the upcoming release of a person who is not SB 54 eligible. In this entry, for March 27, 2019, a Sacramento County personnel spoke to an ICE agent and informed him of an upcoming release time. This person was also not SB 54 qualified. Because of the timestamp, we believe the second entry is correlated to the first. To be clear, both log entries, the person was not SB 54 qualified, yet the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office still informed ICE of their release time. Illegal transfer of people to ICE. The next four slides give examples of people who were illegally transferred to ICE, or where the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office clearly tried to illegally transfer them. Unless a criminal carve-out applies, or there is a judicial warrant, or probable cause determination, SB 54 prohibits law enforcement agencies from transferring people to ICE. Some entries will state that a person had an I-247 in their file. This is a type of immigration form that is voluntary to comply with. These logbook entries show how the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office has a policy, any practice, of turning people into ICE outside the gates, even though state law prohibits their transfer. So long as a person is transferred outside the gates, they believe it's okay to transfer, but that's not what the law states. I will now ask you to turn your attention to the logbook entry dated February 25, 2020. In this entry, an individual was released from RCCC. Sacramento County Sheriff records state that this person did not qualify for any SB 54 criminal history carve-out. Nonetheless, after receiving a detainee request from ICE for this person, Sacramento County personnel notified ICE of this person's pending release. On March 5, 2020, an individual was scheduled to be released from RCCC. Sacramento County Sheriff records state that ICE had sent a detainee request for him, but that he was not SB 54 qualified. Nonetheless, Sacramento County Sheriff personnel made at least two calls to ICE to notify them of this person's release time, and participated in a subsequent call with an agent who confirmed release and date time. In this entry, from January 14, 2021, an individual was scheduled to be released from RCCC. Even though Sacramento County Sheriff records state that he did not qualify for any SB 54 criminal history carve-out, a Sacramento County Sheriff officer contacted ICE advising of the advanced I-203 detainer in the inmate file, along with an I-247A detainee request, and that inmate also did not meet SB 54 requirements, but that person had been released on his own recognizance and was to be released forthwith. An ICE agent informed the Sacramento County Sheriff officer that he will be coming to pick up outside the gate upon release. Minutes later, ICE agents arrived at RCCC and checked in with Sacramento County Sheriff's Office personnel. For time's sake, I will skip over this example, but it's another example that shows that in 2021, an individual was released from RCCC and was subsequently picked up by ICE. And now, under reporting of ICE transfers. So under SB 54, law enforcement agents are required to annually report to the California Attorney General's Office. In their reporting, they must state two pieces of information. The first, the number of transfers conducted, and second, the offense that allowed for that transfer. This report was obtained through a PRA request to the Attorney General's Office. It shows that in 2019, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office reported to the Attorney General that it transferred 52 people into ICE custody. We think some of these 52 reported transfers were illegal, but even leaving that aside, this is a portion of a Sacramento County Sheriff's Office spreadsheet. It shows that the Sheriff's Office reported 76 ICE arrests of people in Sacramento County in 2019. This sheet has 78 rows showing ICE arrests. We clipped the top rows and the bottom of the spreadsheet to show the last entry, which was 78. So 78 rows minus the top two header rows equals 76 transfers. There were at least 24 arrests by ICE that should have been logged as transfers, but were not. We think those 24 transfers are at a minimum the starting point of thinking about how the illegal transfers are working. This is the smoking gun as to lack of transparency. This shows lack of transparency and suspicious record keeping at the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. We do not have a copy of this spreadsheet for 2020 and 2021 because we didn't receive it in our PRA requests, nor do we know if these exist.
I just want to keep you cognizant of time.
So takeaways. There are three takeaways we want to leave you with today. First, Sacramento County Sheriff's inconsistent record keeping results in an underreporting of ICE transfers. Second, there's troubling information showing systematically illegal practices by the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. And third, the board should take action to stop cooperation with ICE. With that, I will close my presentation. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your time.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, I just, I don't want to ask a question of the Speaker yet, but you retain that, those slides flow in the system, so if I want to, any board member wants to ask a question later on, you can bring those back up.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because I probably want to ask a couple of questions later on as we get into the discussion. Thank you.
Can you bring up the next slide, please?
Are you going to bring up the last resolution slide?
Yeah, I've asked Metro Cable if they could bring that up, please.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
We'll just wait for them to bring that up, so that you're all set, and you can speak
Ma'am Chair, while you're waiting for the slide, could I ask a question, if I could, just of counsel?
Sure.
Yeah. Lisa, I wanted to ask, there was a slide shown up there of a reporting form that's transmitted to the state, that was, I think, for the calendar year 2019. I trust that if this board wanted access to that document, we don't need to have a PRA, it's a public document, it's just going, that we could ask for the 2020 and 2021, or go back as far as they keep those records, we could ask for those?
Yes, certainly.
Okay, good. I just want to be sure about that. Thanks.
Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you, Chair Frost and Supervisors, for the opportunity to make a presentation today. SAC Immigration, SLIDER, and Alianza present to you a proposed board resolution restricting expenditures on immigration enforcement. The board clearly has the authority to prevent the expenditure of county resources on immigration enforcement activities, including prohibiting the department from spending resources to notify ICE of the date and time of a person's release. Last year, at the Truth Act forum, the county council responded that because the sheriff is an independently elected official, the board could not dictate whether or not to inform ICE about the release of a person in county custody. That was clearly incorrect. The board does have the authority to direct, prohibit departmental personnel from cooperating with ICE, and can also prohibit the expenditures of county resources on such cooperation. State law expressly provides local law and policymaking bodies like the board to prohibit all cooperation with immigration authorities. It is worth noting that the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors used expenditure language to effectively prohibit cooperation between county council and ICE. The Sacramento County Board of Supervisors may restrict or reduce the sheriff's funding, so long as it's motivated by a genuine concern for county expenditures. None of the sheriff's statutory functions mandate cooperation with ICE. On April 28, Alianza SAC Immigration Coalition and ACLU sent a letter addressing the inaccurate information that was presented at the 2020 forum. I end by the proposed resolution that we sent to you. There are other slides, but we want to talk about the last two. Therefore, be resolved that no part of the budgetary allocation of the sheriff's department shall be used to provide assistance or cooperation to ICE in its civil immigration enforcement. And third, oh, be it further resolved that the use of monies for personnel to give ICE agents access to individuals, or allowing them to use the county facilities for investigative interview or other purposes, expending county time or resources responding to ICE inquiries or communications with ICE regarding individuals incarcerated, stands, or release times, or otherwise participating in any civil immigration enforcement activities is prohibited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Board Supervisors. Gabby Trejo with Sacramento Act. And one of the things that I think is so alarming to us as an organization, and working with immigrants across our county, is that these types of actions continue to erode the trust that community has, or even could have, with law enforcement. There's no incentive for an undocumented immigrant family to report crimes if they feel like they cannot trust that law enforcement is not going to turn them in to ICE. We, across the state, different organizations, have fought to get this bill passed and this law in place, and it's being broken here in Sacramento. And you all, I have seen you be courageous in the past in different issues. We need you to do something about this, to stop this, because communities are at risk. Communities are at risk of trusting the fact that their information can be turned to immigration. That's a very scary situation. And I want to end by reading, one of our clergy was speaking this morning, Pastor Pam Anderson, and she shared this scripture, and it's from Isaiah 10, 1:1-2. "To those who make unjust laws, to those who issue oppressive decrees, to deprive the poor of their rights, to withhold justice from the oppressed of my people. A just law was put into place, and is not being followed by the sheriff's department. It is depriving the poor of their rights and withholding justice from the oppressed." So, Board of Supervisors, we are imploring you, on this day, to do what is the right thing to do. Stop aiding unjust practices. Stop aiding unjust practices and do what is right. Use your voice, stand with our community.
Thank you. So, we do have other public comments. Did you supervisors wish to speak now or after all of public comment?
I want to get a couple of clarifying questions.
Okay, please do, Supervisor Natale.
To interrupt, certainly the public testimony, but I wanted to be clear on the form. If you could bring that up, flow in the presentation. That's fine, I'm sorry. Yeah, the other one, the one was, yeah, the transfer form.
Sure. I'm going to ask Metro Cable if they can pull up that first slide, the first PowerPoint from the ACLU group, please.
No, this is for, is under-reporting the form. I'm going to ask a question of, I guess Matt's stuck having to respond to us, but, or Officer Peterson, excuse me. Yep, go ahead, there we go. So, I'm going to ask a question of the sheriff first here, if you could. So, this form, Matt, is submitted annually by the Sheriff's Department.
Yes.
And is obviously a matter of public record. The question was raised here in the, again, maybe you haven't had a chance to research this, but that there was under-reporting, just as the text says there, that they did a calculation of at least another 30% more, 20, I think 24. You had 52 on this, and they said 76. How is this, I guess, how is this form composed? Is it assigned to booking agents or officers at the two jails? Or does it come to central administration? How does it prepare? Now, I want to get to the current number, but this goes back two years, but it's really relevant to the conversation, so.
Yeah, so each jail provides their information to what is actually my assistant, who compiles the compilation to report it.
Okay, and to the question that was posed today, again, we're going back two years, but again, it's still relevant to the conversation. If there, at least there's, it's been portrayed to us that there are discrepancies, how would that get rectified? So, would it, information normally come through you or through your assistant that, you know, although this is a bit postdated just because of the way the Records Act work and they went to the state to get it, how would they get that trued up? You know, and there may be a logical explanation, or there may just have been overs, I don't know. I don't want to presume what happened, but there seems to be a significant difference. It's not a matter of one or two. There's 24 that they've identified through their research, however that was conducted, and in what the sheriff actually attested to through the sheriff's offices to the state. So, how does, if there's questions regarding that, how would that get trued up, or at least the explanation behind that?
Well, kind of like what you said at the beginning, that I haven't seen this information, right? So, I don't, I don't have a context to know where there's extra under-reportings have occurred. So, kind of difficult. I guess if there's, we would likely amend, send an updated reporting if we do identify additional ones that we didn't originally report.
Okay, well, and I would say that's fair. So, based upon, I guess, just as one member of this board, but I think it's important, obviously, you know, with the public testimony, and we'll receive more, but we have, you know, at least identified a difference here. And their review, they may have additional material that they could, again, submit. I would guess, I would just go through this hearing process, though, and ask that if there is, needs to be an adjustment to provide whatever that number really was, you know, whether it's just the number the sheriff submitted, a higher number, or something in between. I think that, you know, that's important, the accuracy, obviously because of the sensitivity and the human impacts that are being talked about here. I wanted to also ask, Matt, just, I was a question to counsel a moment ago. If this board requested, so we would have it occurring, I trusted what Sheriff Jones presented was that there were only five SB 54, the disposition, so the form for 2020 would show just that. You just had, you had only five of record, and that would be the testimony, I mean, that would be the, that would be on the 2020 form that went to the state?
On that form, it would list the three that were actually transferred.
Okay, so it doesn't call out the other two, where there was no. So, last year's form would show three. And is there, again, this year is not yet over, but, you know, they showed, again, some of their information called from a PRA showed at least one circumstance, if not maybe two, that were in the 2021 timeframe. Do we have a number currently that, is it zero? Is it one or two, or do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's very minimal, if there's any. I just don't have those numbers right now.
Okay, well, again, I just want to offer suggestions and get back to public testimony that I think for future truth form hearings, though, to have that form as a part of, you know, certainly the sheriff presented that in the slideshow, but to have that, and I guess it would be information that would be useful for purposes, certainly to reflect on, but also then if we're going to have a conversation, because we just, we're taking the current year, which is the purpose for this form, but then we've gone back and there seem to be some questions about that. So, I guess I would just might take away with that, in light of what we've heard today, that you could respond to this board either through Sheriff Jones or directly to us regarding what happened in 2019 and whether there's any amended, upon review, any amended numbers that would be submitted to the state or resubmitted. Okay, all right, that's all I have right now, ma'am.
So, are you asking for that response, that follow-up?
Yeah, some follow-up, yeah.
On the same page.
Officer Peterson is flat-footed here, but I think that in light of what we've heard, again, I just think it's relevant to the conversation about what we're doing, how we're doing it, but how we are reporting it to the best of our ability.
Absolutely.
And it goes back to the whole thing about trust, so.
Right, okay, Supervisor Serna had the comment.
Thank you. I had a question for Ms. Kravitz. So, you referenced what the county of LA has done relative to, I guess, ensuring that there's, that their budget is not being, or their budget allocation for their sheriff's department is not in any way being used to facilitate ICE detention and transfers and other coordination. Was that, is that something that was achieved by resolution? Because you gave us some resolves that your group is interested in the board considering, but I'd like to know more about how your group feels the LA County has, or the County Board of Supervisors there has sufficiently implemented a means to ensure that budget allocations are in line with their value set that clearly is, you know, shows concern for ICE detention and transfers?
Yes, I can get that to you definitely, I'll just show you. But that was clearly done by the LA Board. And because it was approved and clearly not out of compliance with the state, we felt that this board too could limit the expenditures.
But was it done by resolution? Or was it simply done by budgetary fiat? I mean, how was it achieved?
That, I'd have to get back to you on that one. I thought it was actually a budgetary fiat, but I don't, you know, remember exactly how that one was done for that particular one.
Okay, and then a question for County Council. Regardless, for the time being, how LA County achieved what has been characterized here, how practically could this board, if it so desired, condition or otherwise restrict its annual budgetary allocation to the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department for restriction for one particular activity like this?
Yeah, and not having looked directly at the resolution or budget that Ms. Kravitz is referencing, I would just be guessing about what LA County did. However, I think language in the budget resolution that the board passed would have to call out specifically what the board does and does not want the sheriff to spend its allocated budget on, because as you know, that really is the only practical control that the Board of Supervisors has over operations of the sheriff's department. So, again, this is the first time I'm seeing this as well. We've obviously been here last year, and the same points were being raised, but I was not contacted in between last year and this year from ACLU or anyone else on the issue. So, it's hard for me to specifically address what they're saying, but I'm happy to look further into it if that is the will of the board.
So, you're guessing, Ms. Travis, that it probably was a case that the budget discussion, deliberation, and final decision had to join with a resolution that was very specific about the conditional uses for that budget item?
That's what I would assume. I was actually just trying to take a look while Ms. Kravitz was talking, and I wasn't able to find anything yet. But certainly either a standalone resolution, as suggested by the ACLU, or language in the budget resolution would be needed in order to make that restriction, assuming that that is something that the board wants, and we would have to legally vet that, of course, as well.
Sure, so, absent, absent that connection to our annual budgeting exercise, what practical authority does the Board of Supervisors for any county in California have, again, absent the budgetary fulcrum, if you will, to leverage, you know, certain priorities? Absent that, what authority does the board have without the necessary cooperation of the sheriff to affect what the ACLU and others are advocating for here?
And Ms. Kravitz also alluded to the fact that the board does, and I do not agree with that. I, again, haven't been provided any specific citations or references as to what it was, but as our office has said for many years, repeatedly, the board does not have discretion or authority to direct the sheriff's operations. And again, as you know, and have, so aptly pointed out, the budget piece is really the only control that we have.
Okay, very good, thank you.
We did send that April 28th letter to all of you, and we listed the citations in there as to where that comes from, so, where the law is directed. So, I can resend that letter to you if you'd like.
Or, yeah, present it here, or have someone else present it. I mean, it seems like that's a pretty important part of your argument.
Okay, I can do that.
Or you could send it to the board clerk to have her distribute it to us.
I can do that right now.
Thank you.
And I would just note that, obviously, lawyers can have different perspectives. So, the ACLU obviously is coming with it from a certain perspective, while our office may be not agree with that position. But again, we would be happy to discuss with them and understand it. But our longstanding position is that what I stated.
And then, one last thing. So, if we were going to consider some budgetary consequences associated with trying to affect either the real or perceived coordination with ICE at our jails, would that be a resolution that would have to be considered at the time we're doing our budgeting? Or could it be considered well in advance of that?
I suppose it could be considered in advance, but nothing could be effectuated until the actual budget was adopted with similar restrictions.
Sure, all right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, ladies, for your public comments. And we'll go ahead and proceed with, did you need?
Shall I send a letter to Florence?
Yeah, just, yeah, you can just send it to boardclerk@saccounty.net, and she'll distribute to all of us. Thank you. Our next speaker is Janice Rodriguez, followed by Brian Lopez, followed by Shereen Miles. And you'll have two minutes, and you can begin whenever you like.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. My name is Janice Rodriguez. I am the current chair of the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. The coalition is made up of 40 organizations across Sacramento County that work directly with immigrants in our community. We were part of the efforts that led to the non-renewal of the contract that the sheriff's department had with ICE. Based on the presentations you've already heard, I'm not going to repeat a lot of what was already said. I would, however, like to urge you, on behalf of individuals that couldn't be here today, and I want to note the fact that this is being done on 2:00 on a Wednesday afternoon, not exactly the time that's best for the public to take time away from their work or lives to be here and provide public comment. I'd like to urge you, on behalf of all those individuals that cannot be here today, to take a moral stance and look at whether there is collaboration that the sheriff is having with ICE. I know that there's still a number of questions that I'm sure that the board might raise, but based on the Public Records Act information that the ACLU presented, there does seem to be at least some kind of missing piece in terms of the information that the sheriff's office is reporting, whether they're collaborating or not with ICE. So, I urge you to stand with the humanity of our undocumented community members and really hold the sheriff accountable. The sheriff is not above the law. Senate Bill 54 was passed with the intent to make the state a safe state for our immigrant community. I urge you to see within your authority how you can limit the sheriff's overreach and his complete disregard for the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Lopez, please. Followed by Shereen Miles. Good afternoon, Brian.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Lopez. I'm the president of the Cruz y Nozovar Association. We're a nonprofit association of Latino attorneys and judges here in the greater Sacramento area. We are, including in our members are a number of civil rights, criminal defense, and immigration practitioners and experts. And we come before the board today in order to support the ACLU of Northern California and other organizations in calling for an end to all collaboration with immigration enforcement on behalf of the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. Due to the multitude of reports that have emerged in recent years, along with evidence, we're left with no other conclusion that by their sharing of information, their prolonged detention, and their transfer of detainees contrary to California law, there has been an abuse of authority that has been committed against our community through this partnership. We implore the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to act within their authority in order to prevent any further harm from any of our residents here in Sacramento County, and also to our county in further complicity and liability for these troubling practices. Since 2014 and 2018, the California Trust and the California Values Act respectively have shielded individuals, as well as California state and local agencies, from federal government overreach that could harm unjustly our inhabitants and our agencies. It is therefore troubling that there appears to be a pattern in practice on behalf of the California, or, excuse me, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department in disregarding, if not purposefully impeding, the protections that are found not only in this California legislation, but some of the core constitutional protections that are guaranteed to all and form the bedrock of our society. In light of the controversy that was elicited in 2014 on behalf of the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department in their failure to properly implement the Trust Act, it is further alarming that these reports have continued to emerge, and it describes a pattern in practice of flouting the law, which is something that we should not expect from the California, or, excuse me, the Sacramento County sheriffs. We implore the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to act within their authority to end this practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Shereen Miles, followed by Susan Lang.
Thank you, Board Chair Frost and members of the County Board of Supervisors. As a leader in Sacramento Act, a member of Trinity Cathedral, and a longtime resident of District 3, I am ashamed that our county sheriff dissembles to us and illegally collaborates with ICE. Further, I am appalled that he could not even stay around to respond to our presentation. This is at least the second year that that has occurred. I urge us to use all means available, including the budget, to hold our sheriff accountable. As a voter, it shocks me to think that this board members, some of these board members believe that this board has no authority over unlawful activities of one of its departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Lang, followed by Duke Cooney.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Lang, resident of El Grove. I'm coordinator of a volunteer group of community members aged 18 to 78 who visit with people in immigration detention at the Yuba County Jail. I've been doing this work since 2014 and have probably visited with over 150 people through the years, some one time and some weekly over the years. The first time I realized that there was a false narrative about the dangerousness of people in immigration detention was a press release from the sheriff at Yuba County in response to a hunger strike in February 2019 at the jail. The sheriff listed the convictions of the people in ICE custody there. This astounded me. Never having ever had any contact with law enforcement, I didn't realize how this type of information could turn the public against those in immigration detention. Every single person in immigration detention, regardless of conviction, has finished paying the price for whatever has happened in their lives. That's the way our justice system works. Immigration status does not in any way change how dangerous a person may be. I am not saying that any noncitizen should automatically be granted status, but there is no need for people to be transferred into traumatic and costly ICE custody while their cases are adjudicated. Thank you for voting yes on a resolution to end all cooperation of the Sheriff's Department with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Duke Cooney, followed by Mackenzie Wilson.
Good morning, Chair Frost and members. My name is Duke Cooney, and I'm a resident of South Sacramento. I'm also a candidate for supervisor to represent District 2. But today, I'm here to encourage you to explicitly and without hesitation affirm Sacramento County's duty to protect and serve every resident regardless of documentation, because a document is not a measure of a human being's worth or the value they hold for their families and within their communities. In South Sacramento alone, we have over 11 different languages spoken, each from a different part of the world, representing groups with unique customs and beliefs. These communities must be protected at all costs. They shouldn't have to live with the anxiety of their children and family members making a small mistake and leading to deportation. The county must do better. This county must take every step possible to ensure our county tax dollars are not being used to support further community trauma. We must end cooperation with ICE. Other counties have already taken these steps. Why can't we? Now, I can't speak for any of you, but for me, some of the people I love most in this world happen to be undocumented, people that have done incredible work in their communities, who've gone to our schools, sat next to us in our churches. Now they need our help. And if you're unwilling to do whatever it takes to protect our community members, our family, then step aside. If the choice is that difficult, then let the next generation step forward, because we're ready. I'm ready. Business as usual is not something Sacramento is willing to tolerate. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Mackenzie Wilson, followed by Courtney Hansen.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Mackenzie Wilson. I am a member of Decarcerate Sacramento, longtime community resident and a local organizer. I want to, like, live in my emotions. I think I'm appalled as well. I'm absolutely appalled. Like, Sheriff Scott Jones got up here and he just lied to your face. I haven't heard you ask enough about those lies that were said to your face. I appreciate, Serna, you asked, like, hey, is there any time that we're talking? Is there any time? Is there any time? And he said, no. And what I watched and what I saw up there were timestamps and cops on the clock actively working with ICE. I appreciate the questions we're asking about what power y'all hold, but what power y'all held. Like, Scott Jones walked out of here, and I'm sorry, but you don't have any of the answers, even though half the numbers have hit your desk. Like, there's something wrong going on here. There's a culture, there's a practice going on within the Sheriff's Department and these local law enforcement agencies that you actually do have the power to rein in and take control of, that you really do have the power and the ability to hold them accountable, because what needs to happen is more transparency. What needs to happen is the end of ICE contracts. Is there, we've already done that, but like, well, obviously, we're not. I mean, we're putting people right outside of RCCC and we're letting them come pick them up. We're destroying families. And y'all have actively taken stands against this, but here we are today, still hearing lies coming out of the Sheriff's Department. Yet, every single year, you give 70%, or 37% of our general fund. You give them our money. You allow them to continue to do it. And you have to, like, really think about, like, why you're, like, why? What, like, what power you hold? Like, what can you do? What can we do to make the sheriff more accountable? I can't believe he walked out of here today and left somebody to, like, pick up his mess. They lied to you every time. They lied to you about COVID outbreaks. They lied to you about where the money is going. They lied to you about how many overtime, how much overtime, where the, like, it's just lies. It's lies, it's lies, it's lies, and it's so frustrating. I'm appalled that I came in here today and that not enough of the questions that you need to ask have been asked. Like, call these folks out. This isn't, this isn't politics. We don't need to play nice. You're giving all of our money to these folks, and they're lying to our faces, and they're destroying our families and our communities.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Do better, please. I'm tired of asking that. Do better.
Thank you. Okay, Courtney Hansen.
Hello. Hello. Good afternoon. I'm Courtney, also here representing Decarcerate Sacramento. And I've been thinking a lot today about a woman that I was inside Sat County Jail with many years ago, who I witnessed getting taken away to be transferred to ICE. I witnessed guards explain what was about to happen next callously and in English. She only spoke Spanish. Luckily, another person in our cell did speak Spanish and was able to translate, only to tell her that they were saying, no, you actually will not be able to see your four-year-old boy before being transferred. And I'm here today because I really wish on that day that this woman, who was done serving her jail time, was released back to her family and home, and I wonder where she is today. Our Sheriff's Department is like a black box, and when we finally get to hear from Sheriff Jones in a setting like this because of a long, hard fight and policy change, or because community groups did public records requests, we get gaslighting and lies. Once again, it's very frustrating to hear that advocates and those concerned with justice for vulnerable people in their communities are uplifting truths in direct contradiction to the talking points and recycled PowerPoint of our Sheriff's Department. We need your legacy to be protecting our immigrant community members from this double jeopardy, double punishment that is so unnecessary and so cruel and so effective at separating and devastating families and nothing other than that. You can do this in creative ways and budgetary ways. We need you to figure out how you can most effectively do this, and look at how it's been done elsewhere. You can also create containers and follow up and actually get answers to these questions, containers for public discussion and demanding truth that can lead to more public pressure for Sheriff Scott Jones to stop doing this in our communities. There is so much you can do. There is zero evidence that cooperating with ICE does anything to protect the public. Halting ICE transfers is a racial justice issue. ICE detention facilities are sites of routine, physical, and sexual abuse. It's a gender justice issue. Stopping ICE transfers is a public health issue. COVID-19 has heightened that crisis with ICE's systemic medical neglect, leading to a 15-year-high death toll. This is where you're sending these people. By definition, anyone the sheriff transfers to ICE has already been found eligible for release from custody by a judge. If not because of where they were born, these community members would be allowed to return home to their families and communities. And just to highlight the injustice even more, we know that many people have to come to this country because of what our country is doing abroad. So it's like a triple punishment, actually, not a double punishment. Please do whatever you can to stop it.
Thank you. Okay, we have some folks on the phone. Okay, please transfer the first caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, hello. Am I going now? Can you hear me?
Yes. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Geronimo Aguilar, and I am calling on behalf of Legal Services for Prisoners with Children and All of Us Are None Sacramento, and just calling in strong support of item number one on the agenda, calling for an end to ICE transfers and any cooperation from the sheriff here in Sacramento County with immigration enforcement agents. I am also working on statewide legislation to end ICE transfers altogether through AB-937 Division Act. And we've just, I've just come across countless families and leaders and organizers that are working on and advocating on behalf of undocumented immigrant families and communities, and just seeing the pain and the hurt that these ICE transfers cause, and also the fact that it's really illegal, you know, for this county to continue to cooperate with federal agents in order to criminalize, dehumanize, and ultimately deport our beloved community members. And so I'm here calling to, you know, really advocate for Sacramento Board of Supervisors to make this right, to ensure that this county is not double punishing people solely based on their citizenship status, and that people have the chance to re-enter and be reunited with their family, their children, and their loved ones, and ultimately their community. And so that's why I'm calling, and I urge this Board of Supervisors to, again, end all ICE transfers out of Sacramento County. Respectfully, thank you.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm Alan Ash, co-chair of the Sacramento ACLU chapter made up of local volunteer activists, and I want to start with a riddle. When is a Truth Act forum not a Truth Act forum? Answer, when Sheriff Scott Jones uses the Truth Act forum to lie to you for years, and that's just what's happened. At the 2019 Truth Act forum, I watched ACLU attorney Sean Reardon warn you about illegal ICE transfers and notifications happening in the shadows. Sheriff Jones then got up and responded to Sean Reardon's warning by saying it, quote, "Sounds pretty salacious and scary, but the reality is we've made no illegal notifications. There's nothing operating in the shadows," end quote. We now know that was a lie. We know it's a lie because the ACLU uncovered documents showing almost immediately after SB 54, the California Values Act, went into effect in 2018, the Sacramento Sheriff's Office worked out ways to evade the law's limits on ICE notifications and transfers. Using a shadow system that included an ICE logbook at the RCCC jail, deputies regularly notified ICE of release dates and times in violation of California law. Legal ICE transfers took place inside the gates of the RCCC, while transfers explicitly illegal under SB 54 took place just outside the gates, with ICE getting an illegal notification to expect someone ICE wanted to arrest. This system not only violated California law, but directly contradicted what Sheriff Jones told this board. In response, this board must take a strong stand against inflicting this illegal practice of funneling people to ICE when instead they should be returning to their homes and our community under state law. Take action opposing all ICE transfers in this county, and don't let the county council tell you like she did last year that you don't have the same power to prohibit ICE transfers that supervisors had when they did it in San Francisco, Santa Clara, Los Angeles, San Joaquin, Santa Cruz, Humboldt, and Contra Costa counties. I started with a riddle, but I'll end with a serious question. Are you going to let Sheriff Jones lie to this board and break the law with no consequences from you? I hope the answer is no, because otherwise you're providing no police accountability at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next caller, please. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yeah, I'm really curious to know how many times this, the sheriff, has to come before this board, lie and spit in your face, telling you completely, like, completely untruth, like, complete falsehoods, without you taking any sort of action to hold him accountable, without even a mouth, like, an ounce of pushback from this board. I can't agree more with the ACLU and the other folks that have spoken up on this. This is, this is the county that declared racism a public health crisis, and yet here you are, letting the biggest racist in Sacramento County continue to operate with impunity, like, triple punishes people based on their documentation status. This should, like, this is the public health crisis that you all stood, stood, like, over a year ago now, to say that was a serious problem that needed county resources to address. Well, here's your opportunity. You can cut money from him right now by passing that resolution to make clear that no funds to, like, go to the sheriff for this purpose, and explicitly prohibit him from doing so, to make it illegal, because as it is right now, he's continuing to do it. But I can't help but wonder whether several of you, all of you, on this board right here, have ulterior motives, your own personal self-interest, pet projects that you're worried that he's, that you like from the Sheriff's Department, that he's going to cut funding from, and that you're, like, which is making you hesitate right now, whether you're going to actually pass such a bold resolution, or take any kind of stance on how much money he's getting. Because as it stands right now, you've done nothing but increase his budget, a budget that, like, takes up over 30%, 38%.
You have 15 seconds.
To continue giving him more money year after year so that he can do these racist, unconstitutional policies. I need this, I need this board to actually put up a shut up. Don't tell me that you're, like, that this is a problem.
Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
Tell me that it is, and actually take action. Yes, I'm going to say right here and now. You need to pass this resolution, do what the ACLU is telling you, and quit allowing this fuck, this racist fascist fuck to tell, like, to lie to you with impunity. It's disgusting.
Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
It doesn't inspire any respect for me or other members of the public for you, any more so than the sheriff has clearly shown to you.
Thank you. Okay, please send the next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Henry Ortiz. I'm with All of Us Are None, and I'm calling to ask that we stop all these practices with, you know, our county resources being coordinated with federal resources. You know, people that do state crimes are there to do state time, and therefore should not be further punished through federal ICE detention centers and coordinating and collaborating to keep this whole system of oppression, of monopolizing human lives and destroying human lives. You're building too many issues for our community members to try to resolve here. There's a lot of families in desperate need and desperate help. This is, this is hurting families. This is not hurting some deportation law. And like, let's not forget, you know, this land, if you were native of this land, you are all immigrants, you know, to our native land. And yet, we coexist and we create this America that we now live in, but yet we still keep oppressing the hardest-working people that are rooted in this land, whose blood is in this land. And so I want to definitely request that we stop all that interaction between, you know, city and local law enforcement, referring our national citizens, you know, to ICE deportation systems that have been oppressive and abusive. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just closed the queue, and I just want to double-check, because sometimes you can slip in after I close it.
Okay. Did it go through?
So that's it? That's your last caller for this item? And it looks like no one actually was caught in between, so.
Thank you. Before we go to Supervisor Serna, I wanted to ask County Council, I think it's County Council that I clarify this with, because I think there might be a misunderstanding. I remember when we were having those conversations around ICE and cooperating with the ICE in the jail, and part of the concern that the sheriff had was that if we
in the jail and part of the concern that the sheriff had was that if we discontinued our cooperation with ICE in the jail, then ICE would automatically go into the community to pick up these people into the communities and it made it not, it was actually a benefit that they could work in cooperation with ICE while those people were in our jail closer to their family where they could be visited on a daily basis and so forth. And I remember having that conversation around if there's someone in our jail, they don't ask the question if they're an immigrant, they don't identify them, but if someone is in our jail and ICE picks that up through their, I guess their technology, they contact our jail to say you have someone in your jail. And it was a cooperative relationship that we received, you know, six million a year for, it was a cooperative relationship that kept our local immigrants close to home, but it didn't, by discontinuing it in our jails, it didn't discontinue ICE's activity and ICE is separate from our sheriff, is my understanding. Their activities go on regardless. Is that correct? That's what I understood the relationship with ICE to be, that there's, there's been a lot of accusations and I think based on maybe an assumption that when we discontinued our cooperative relationship with ICE in the jails, that ICE was supposed to go away and not come into our region or something. I don't think that's what it was.
Well, are you referring to the action in 2018 to discontinue the contract with ICE? I'm not sure if there's the question, but yes, obviously ICE is its own separate legal entity. It's a federal entity and we have no control over what they do outside of the confines of our jail and that remains whether or not we have a contract to cooperate with them or not.
So I'm not sure if ICE still, even though we don't have that cooperative agreement, if ICE contacts our sheriff department or not?
I believe that was addressed in the PowerPoint that the sheriff had, but I can't answer that question. You would have to ask them.
I think, yeah, I would like to clarify because it seems like there's an assumption that there should be no more ICE and I don't know that we have control over that at this level.
I'll explain the processes. When they identify that someone's in custody, they will submit a request for detainer. And so that's what the sheriff was talking about. We received 280 of those in 2020 and we just enter them into the system and immediately release them. So they're not, we're not holding them, we're not honoring those detainers, but that's, that's ICE's communication to us requesting that we hold those people.
But they know they're there even though we're not holding them or handing them over to them from our jail directly.
That's correct.
That's, I wanted to make sure. I missed part of the presentation tonight, but thank you for clarifying that. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to say thank you to all those that have joined us here in chambers today and that called in to speak to this issue. This is getting to be very frustrating for me and perhaps others on this board in terms of trying to reconcile the figures. And unfortunately, I haven't heard yet from the sheriff's department, and I say this with all due respect, but I have not seen any kind of reconciliation with the numbers that the ACLU has put forth. And when I asked the question earlier, the questions, plural, earlier of Sheriff Jones, it was precisely to hear on the record, you know, what the sheriff's department is doing relative to anything, anything, a casual phone call with regards to ICE. And now I just heard ICE has talked to the sheriff's department 280 times last year. That, that is completely, to me, that kind of contradicts what the sheriff said earlier and maybe he wasn't clear on my question. I thought it was a pretty simple question. And I used his own slide to ask it, but it's troubling to me that now for a few years, this board is presented with two different sets of figures and then we're left to reconcile it in a, you know, in a frustrated frenzy of sorts in public. So that's the first thing that has to change. And my estimation is, you know, and I know, I don't know necessarily how to accomplish that other than the, I think the sheriff's department needs to do, quite frankly, a better job in being prepared for these Truth Act forums when we have especially information that is presented in advance from concerned constituents. And, you know, maybe they're, like Supervisor Natale said, maybe there is an easy explanation. So I say this without prejudice towards the sheriff's department. Maybe there is an easy explanation that goes to some misunderstanding, but here we are two and a half years later and I cannot reconcile it. There's no, there's no there there. So that has to change in my estimation. You also heard me ask several questions earlier of County Council and Ms. Kravitz about, you know, this board's authority relative to our budgeting authority and wanting to understand what other counties in the state of California have done relative to using that authority to affect how their relative sheriff departments interact with ICE. Now, we did obviously vote to cancel the contract with ICE three years ago. I think that speaks to the value set that this board has and granted, we have a new member and since that time, but I think that was certainly some, perhaps considerable indication that this board had concerns at that time about the ICE contract. I continue to have concerns that I'm just not getting as 20% of this board the right information. And so I'm feeling extremely compelled, and I know we can't do it today because I don't believe unless County Council wants to correct me, I don't believe, because the way it's been agendized today, that this board could adopt a resolution today. In fact, I know for certain we couldn't because we don't have the language. There have been some resolves that are presented to us for consideration, but I'm compelled to say out loud, say publicly that I'm willing to work with the ACLU, with ACT, with others that have expressed concern over the next few months as we get closer to our budget deliberations in June and be prepared at that time because it seems like that would be the most opportune way to do it, is consider our budget along with, and that's why I asked the question earlier, along with a resolution that makes it very clear that whatever appropriation this board decides to make on an annual basis is not, none of those, none of those funds, none of those taxpayer dollars are going to be used for any type of ICE cooperation, coordination. And I would expect that the sheriff himself should not have any problem with that because he himself said exactly that. So there, I don't expect any opposition from the sheriff's department because it should be moot for them. But I think for the public and certainly for immigrant advocacy organizations, I think that that is part and parcel of inconsistent with what we did in 2018. So I'm prepared today not to make a motion because we're not prepared to do that today, but to certainly let my colleagues know, let the public know that if the advocates are willing to work with me and my office for the next few months to put a resolution together, I would welcome that. And, you know, we can vote that up or down at the appropriate time come June of next year. But that's, those are my feelings today and yes, they are tempered with a good amount of frustration for the reasons I've stated, but I agree with some of the speakers that say, you know, you need to act, board. I get that. It resonates with me today. So those are the actions that I would like to suggest we pursue and that I would welcome.
Thank you. Supervisor Natale.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Certainly appreciate the comments of my colleague and all the folks that have weighed in on this today. I want to ask a couple more questions before I make some comments because, and again, I didn't ask them earlier, I just wanted to be specific to the question that I posed a few moments ago or a few minutes ago. But I want to ask about this ICE log stamp. The sheriff's representative come to the, you all saw the picture and so does this still exist? Obviously, there was direction given via discovery of a direction from sheriff's personnel. And I guess I, so kind of go back to the frustration that Supervisor Serna related to it. And we get these bits and pieces. We, now this is the third one of these that we've conducted. So how is it? What is protocol from your standpoint? And what's the purpose of this? Is this where, when you get under sheriff's presentation, when you got 280 immigration detainers that were logged and then basically canceled out, is that what goes in there? What is this about? Because they also showed, again, not that you'd have the specifics, but what we saw were written notations with redacted information about the officer and I guess the party who was in custody. What is this? Does this exist at RCCC and does this exist at main jail? We actually have a paper file?
The logbook is designed to document when inmate is about to be released, when they review to see if it's a qualifying offense. That's when they log and say, this qualifying offense, we notified ICE. They are coming to pick them up, to transfer them or they're not. So that's, that's what that logbook is designed for.
So Matt, if I were to ask you for, the information was presented to us today, there should have only been five names in that file in 2020? Three that were given over under SB 54 that ICE took custody of and two that they chose not to. But there should only be in that logbook only five?
Yes.
For 2020.
But it shouldn't be, yes.
Okay. So let me kind of go, and thanks for standing there and taking the questions. I guess what I want to say, and I'll certainly respond to some of the requests made here today, but, you know, it seems to me that part of what we struggle with here irrespective of what action we may take going forward, is that the information we're dealing with is all either past or recent past and we don't have any currency to it. And again, I don't, you know, I'm not following Matt. Some of this, you know, obviously the year's not even out. And then we get to the end of the year and then we're having a discussion about, you know, 18, 20 months, 22 months ago. I guess I want to ask if, and maybe this is of counsel, you can, I'm not going to ask you a question right off the station. If we ask for real-time notice to be given to, we have an inspector general in this county. And again, this is not to redirect or defer on any responsibilities board has, but we have, you know, a position and a person who occupies that position who's given charge by virtue of what this board certainly appropriates for that budget, but also with the charge that was agreed to. And if we, again, the sheriff's office is the keeper of the information, but the inspector general has certain authorities that have been delegated and certain responsibilities and abilities, I would say it that way. So for purposes of real-time notice, is, does this board have the authority to say that we want to have the inspector general anytime one of these detainer forms is received? Because even we pass a resolution saying we're not going to do anything, doesn't mean ICE won't keep sending stuff. Someone's going to have to at least log that in. Is there the ability to develop a system that would have accessible to the public, recognizing the names of, you know, under government code, names of officers and to protect obviously the privacy of folks who might be the ones that were being detained or in custody, to actually have that information available so that any member of this board, the county council, any member of the public, anyone could get, you know, going through proper channels could have that information. Otherwise, this having to go to the attorney general to get information that's provided by this county, two years in retrospect, this seems absolutely ludicrous to me. So I guess, Lisa, I'm asking about, I'm looking at, going forward from tomorrow on potentially.
By real-time notification, are you talking about whatever one of those forms is filled out?
Yep.
So under the MOU with the IG, the sheriff's cooperate, has agreed to cooperate, but it's not necessarily legally required. If there is an issue that he doesn't want to, for instance, if the IG asked, we want to have real-time notification, one of these things is filed. If the sheriff has the authority to decline that, but there is a dispute resolution process that he has to go through and he has agreed to that as well. So ultimately, hopefully, we would be able to work out something like that under the auspices of the IG.
With the courts, right?
Right. It's the presiding, the presiding judge of the Superior Court is the neutral arbitrator.
Okay. And again, I appreciate the response because again, you know, obviously sheriff's not here for me to ask him directly and I wouldn't expect Matt to try to answer on his behalf about how he might or might not consider that. But I think, again, the information, I think it's important from the standpoint of not only validating, you know, the information that's presented, but also giving some currency to it and then having, where we have connection directly to this board, certainly with the cooperation of the sheriff. And if there's a difference on that, obviously ability to, to, you know, go through a process that would hopefully get us to some information that, again, would allow this board, again, in a more current manner to, you know, address issues like the ones we've heard about here today, but maybe others and to, you know, when I hear, you know, the words repeatedly said, you know, people are lying and so forth, you know, I'm not the final judge of that, but it's hard for me to know whether people are lying unless I can, you know, decide based upon information and/or my own judgment. And so, again, I, you know, I'm more interested in knowing, the reason we're here, what the truth is. And sometimes it's hard to come by. But I think in light of the public dollars that are assigned to the responsibilities that this board, on behalf of the people this county is entrusted with, as is the elected sheriff and the other elected officers in this county, that, and then adhering to the law. And there may be differences of views about how things ought to be applied and so forth, but there is law. There's, has been legislated and adjudicated in some cases. And I think that, you know, the ability for this board, though, with such limited information to the frustration that Supervisor Serna and maybe others will share, it's frustrating for me as we sit here today. I guess I would say going forward that, you know, if in fact in 2020, that was the sum total, it was in compliance with SB 54, then we ought to be able to say that to the questions that were asked of the sheriff. And, you know, nothing we do here today is going to undo what was done in 2019 or even 2020 or even yesterday. But I think we're looking at going forward and how we view this as relates to those folks who come into custody for whatever reason and what the law provides for, once that they've served their time and have seen due process through the justice system, that, and then how that relates to obviously, you know, their immigration status or not. And I just think that, you know, to go through this every December and to be, the frustration level going forward, I think the certain, the impacts. And then what's said here and really walking away, not being able to validate that doesn't serve any of us well. So I guess I would, again, I don't know that I'm going to go as far as Supervisor Serna's today. I'm certainly willing to consider any proposal that a colleague brings forward, but I do think that we need to have a clear understanding. We need to be clear with the community and we need to be truthful about what we do and what we say and in our conduct. And, you know, I'm not prepared today to make that judgment because I don't think I have all the information, but I do have enough sense about, you know, where we are that we're not, you know, it doesn't seem like we're getting anywhere in some respects to address the issue that's really core to this and key to this. And so from that purpose, you know, for that reason, I'm, you know, again, I'm certainly willing to hear more, certainly, you know, we've heard here today. And, but I guess I want some current information and I want to know and be able to hopefully cooperatively, but if not, to direct in a way that's meaningful and reflects certainly the, you know, the will of this board in whatever respect that is, to, you know, make sure that we adhere to the law and we do right by people, whatever their status is, immigration or otherwise. And I just think that we just, you know, we have an obligation to do that. So again, I'd say I'm a bit frustrated here today, but I would like to see us, you know, work with the inspector general, work with certainly our current chair, but going forward to have something come back before us and let's to have something come back before us and just get something in place so that we can know, that the public can know, and that when we're called upon to take certain actions or called action by the community, that we've got some good information to go off of and that we can trust that. And then obviously, we have to utilize our judgment discretion as board members as to how we best apply that, whether it's budgetarily, policy wise, and/or any other action that would be available to this board under its authorities. Thanks.
To follow up on what I said about the inspector general, I mean, it's certainly within the board's purview today to ask the inspector general to compare what the sheriff's department records are from the 2020 releases to what the ACLU and the other advocates here today have presented. If that is the will of the board, you could certainly do that. And as you mentioned, have that information come directly to you or have it in public session. That would be up to the board to decide how to address that.
Well, thank you, Madam Counsel. And I guess I would, if I could just add real briefly, Madam Chair, I think that would be helpful, but also then to have an understanding, again, I appreciate the response from the sheriff's official that, you know, this is what they utilize it for. So that ought to be available to the inspector general that if there's a logbook, if there's any activity at all and task inspector general to weigh in on this. And so, you know, as a part of any action day, their direction and guidance would come out, that'd be one of the things that I think we ought to do and that ought to be a request that has some immediacy and some urgency to it. Thanks.
I think it's a good idea to ask the inspector general to follow up also. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. I, first of all, Supervisor Desmond and I have been talking about the inspector general, so I'm going to let him address, you know, his ideas there. But I will tell you, first of all, I am prepared to go as far as Supervisor Serna was prepared to go to today. But there's a couple of other, I mean, the frustration to me, and we've heard the word frustration come up many times, frustrated and frustration, is that we get all these conflicting opinions on what we can do as a board of supervisors. We have to get over that. We've got to have more clarity to that subject. And Ms. Travis, I'm going to, you know, ask you to give us a, an opinion of what our options are. And I would ask you and not certainly direct you, but ask you to discuss beforehand, because as you said, lawyers can disagree. But I've also found in my own personal circumstance that where sometimes we start out with disagreeing, further communication can lead to better clarification. And so I would ask you to, as part of that process, to reach out to the ACLU and have that conversation to, to really give the board, you know, something to chew on as far as what our options really are, what our authority really is. I know what we're told a lot, but this one's a little different than just telling the sheriff how to budget. I will tell you this, I'm beyond frustrated, I'm angry, because I believe that, I mean, I just have the very strong feeling that I've been lied to and I'll be kind and say, the very kindest I can say is out of acts of omission of the truth. And I mean, the contradictory information I'm getting is just starting to weigh very heavily. I will also say that, keep in mind that it's not just a question of the inspector general doing an investigation, whether or not the sheriff cooperates, he also has subpoena power. And I will also say that the Community Review Commission, which is soon to become online, we also gave them subpoena power and this would be something that perhaps they should look into once they get up and running. I would also like to follow up on the ACLU's letter in which, you know, they specifically asked that we look at joining Santa Clara, Los Angeles, and San Francisco in what they've done, whether it's the resolution that Supervisor Serna was talking about, which I do agree with. And we all, the majority of people in this room do not agree with ICE having participation with sheriff's office. Otherwise, we would have not have canceled the contract and I feel strongly about that. But I would like to know what Santa Clara, Los Angeles, and San Francisco is doing or did. And I think that will help provide clarity as to what our authority is, particularly if it has been challenged. Let's see. I guess I will leave it at that for now. Thank you.
And to answer your question directed to me, of course, I will do that. And I was already planning on reaching out to the author of this letter to discuss the two different issues, what is, what authority we have. And then, of course, we agree, I think, on the second one, which is the budget type issue. I have been doing some initial research on Santa Clara, LA, and others. Again, we'll be, love to hear what they have done according to the ACLU. So certainly we'll be reaching out.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I too want to thank, thank the speakers today, the ACLU and others. And I join in the comments and the frustration of my colleagues here is it doesn't make sense, the discrepancy we're seeing between what was presented and the documentation from the ACLU. And I was going to bring up specifically, this is why we have an inspector general to look into this and get to the bottom of this and in the immediate term, give us an understanding of why this discrepancy exists and maybe develop a process going forward as Supervisor Natoli mentioned, where we can have current and ongoing information about the cooperation and communication between the sheriff's office and ICE. So I absolutely will echo that sentiment and that's what the inspector general is for. And I think we have made a, made a very productive or effective MOU so the inspector general can conduct these things with a high level of confidence on behalf of the board. In terms of, I had a question for the ACLU folks and maybe you could answer. Has any of those discrepancies that you identified, have any of those been reported to the attorney general's office as a, you know, potential violation of SB 54's provisions?
I can follow up to confirm that, but I don't believe we have.
Okay. Because it seems, you know, I was just doing a little bit of reading here online and it seems like that's where a lot of the remedies are coming from. I mean, violations are being reported to the attorney general's office, the attorney general initiates an investigation on the, regarding the discrepancies or violations of SB 54. And that's the other thing I would ask our county councils as well. I know you'll be talking to a few people. I would also, you know, ask maybe reach out to the AG's office as well and find out what they're doing in terms of enforcing SB 54 violations in the state of California. With respect to the discussion about a resolution, I too am not prepared to go that far today, but would certainly would consider anything that Supervisor Serna or Supervisor Kennedy introduce in the future. I will say that SB 54, I worked on SB 54 with the Brown administration in my prior life. And I think SB 54 struck a good balance. And I know the ACLU is also a supporter of SB 54. And so I think it's, but of course, SB 54 is meaningless unless it's being complied with, of course. And I certainly would be leery of even going above and beyond SB 54, because I do think there are situations, if it involves a serious or a violent felony or even a warrant issued by a federal, a warrant issued by a federal judge, not just a detainer, that there are those extreme situations where we should still be able to communicate with ICE under those circumstances. So, but this, I too am troubled by the discrepancy that has, that you've brought to our attention today. And we are all, it seems committed to making sure our inspector general looks into this and gets to the bottom of it for us. And if indeed a, these violations or misinformation has been provided to us, then we will have to have a larger discussion about what options we as a board have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, and just as we're looking at this, Lisa, I, Counsel, that, you know, there's discussion about, you know, going forward. So whether through budget, and I referenced this a moment ago, but maybe went through it very quickly, from a policy perspective, how we can assure compliance, not conformance, but compliance with statutes, you know, and again, each of us as elects are certainly held accountable and likewise, the other elected office in this county and certainly have certain responsibilities to go with the functions of our offices. But how we, one, determine and get there is certainly important and to know what, you know, what is really happening. But then how we can not just require it, but then validate compliance. And again, we've had testimony, we've had public discussion here today, and I guess I'd like to know beyond what the board authorities may or may not be, how we might exercise those, but that even if the answer comes back as it has been, at least in previous, there are limited authorities and they're limited to the, to the budget, are there other ways to bring about compliance and to assure that? You know, and I guess if there's an ability to sort through that, and then maybe that's too broad of a question, but I think you understand my point here. I think that's, need to be clear about that.
Yes, I understand the question. I think there are ways that county staff and the board can ensure, ensure compliance if the correct information is, I guess, digested or provided and digested before a meeting like today. So that's something that we can learn from, I think, in the future by making sure that we have the correct information and it also matches the information that the ACLU and others will be discussing. So I think it might be a little bit of apples and oranges that we're talking about today, I'm not sure, because we don't have that information from 2020. So that's, that's an issue.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate your willingness to help us. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor. All right. I think that concludes our Truth Act forum and I want to thank all the public commenters and.
Madam Chair, can I just ask though, that kind of, we concluded the hearing, but, you know, Supervisor Serna's talked about, you know, bringing something back at a future date, but I think there's some other issues that could come back either concurrently and or in advance of that. So let me, if I could just to the chair, ask when we might anticipate, again, it wouldn't be another Truth Act forum, but it would be related to, and maybe I could ask this again too, I don't know, you know, give it some thought, how we could get this back before us in a reasonable amount of time, you know, and it may be related to the budget or to some, you know, other resolution that, or a resolution that would come forward. But I think there are just some essential questions here that we've all, at least in general, have not specifically spoken to. How would we anticipate having that come back to us? Because again, that talks about real time activities.
So I'm guessing that you would like to have a report from the inspector general before we come back. So I've already had staff reaching out to him to ascertain when he could get started on something like this and I don't know yet, but once he's done, then we could schedule something and I'm guessing it would be probably sometime in February because it will take him a while to do that work.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I guess, you know, that gives, you know, a few weeks and I'm recognizing the holiday season, but I, I think if we could have something back to us in February with, again, a public discussion, report and an update, and then obviously people could continue to work on other aspects of this and I'm certainly very respectful of that, but I just, I would hate to just let this run all the way to May or June. And that wasn't suggested by Mr. Serna. I know he asked about doing something in advance, he asked that of counsel earlier on.
We could certainly bring it sooner if it's, if we have the information that we need.
Okay. Very good. Thanks.
Almost need the information before we can have the conversation. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, there's also the issue of retirement. So that might speed things up a little. The, I'd also ask if you could convey to the inspector general the same thing that I said to Ms. Travis, that I would like him during the course of his investigation to reach out to the ACLU, who already has done quite a bit of legwork through their PRA and so forth. So I think that that could help truncate the process.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. If we're going to have to set the AG on a, on a course of pursuing some expedited investigation here, I think it's incumbent upon us, since we're the ones very interested in what he has to say about it, to take the time to give him very clear inquiries and perhaps even put him in writing from the individual board members so that he knows exactly what we're asking him to do. So I'd, I'd like to accept that responsibility on behalf of myself, but I think that's something that he deserves to have.
I think we have everything we need on Truth Act forum and so we will move to our next item, please. Item number, item number two is the managed care procurement update.
Good afternoon, Board. Shivank Ghatari, Director of Health Services. So today I am back before you to talk about, as a follow up from our board meeting on November 2nd, where we spoke about the Health Authority Commission and managed care procurement. At that board meeting, the board had some concerns and I wanted to start off my presentation today by addressing some of those concerns, talk to you about, a recap about some of the things we discussed last time very briefly. I also was going to have a presentation for you today by Sarah Brooks, our consultant from Sellers Dorsey. She is on the phone and she will be presenting when that time comes about data measures used by the state to determine the managed care model performance. And then I will go over a strategy, a proposal for beneficiary input that I'd like to propose to the board in order for us to collect beneficiary input and then talk about next steps. So to give you a summary of the feedback that you gave during the meeting on the 2nd of November, the board shared that you would like to ensure that we stay focused on the healthcare quality for Medi-Cal beneficiaries in Sacramento County. You talked about the lack of clarity regarding how the State Department of Healthcare Services was making decisions to reduce the overall number of managed care plans and your desire to hear from the state in that regard. You talked about the concerns that the timeline for procurement was moving too rapidly for such a large decision and you voiced your desire to hear more directly from beneficiaries of Medi-Cal. I did have a conversation following that board meeting with both the Director of the Department of Healthcare Services and the Medicaid Director, and I wanted to share their feedback. Regarding the timeline for procurement, which I put on this slide, just as a reminder, they did indicate that this timeline has been, is fixed. It is a statewide procurement and it's something that they have delayed twice already, so they weren't willing to do that at this time. They also couldn't adjust it county by county because of the statewide nature of the procurement. They also indicated that by the time the final RFP is released in February for managed care plans to respond, they will need to indicate how many plans will be allowed to operate in Sacramento County post-procurement. And so they hadn't made a decision at the time I talked to them about how many that would be, but they did indicate that they will, will make a decision by that time and would be willing to accept feedback if the board had some following today's meeting. They also indicated that they're unable to come to one of our board meetings to present right now, which is why I asked a consultant who previously had worked in that managed care world with the state to actually present for us. So she will be doing that. And they indicated that once the RFP is released, they will turn their attention to ensuring a smooth transition plan in 2022 between the existing managed care plans and the ones that will be selected under the procurement. Just as a reminder for folks who weren't able to join our last meeting, the geographic managed care model is the one that we have in Sacramento County and it was implemented in the 1990s as a pilot project. We're one of only two counties in the state to have this model. And what that means is we have multiple plans that operate in an insurance marketplace for Medi-Cal beneficiaries. In Sacramento, we have over 583,000 eligible folks who are eligible for Medi-Cal benefits. And currently, the plans that operate here in Sacramento County are Anthem, Health Net, Kaiser, Molina, and Aetna. And on this slide, you'll see And on this slide you'll see the percentage break, or the breakdown of members in each of those plans. During the last board meeting, I talked about some of the challenges that Sacramento County has faced with the GMC model, including a lack of local control, concerns regarding inadequate access to care or poor quality of care for beneficiaries, difficulty for beneficiaries and providers in navigating multiple plan authorizations, processes and networks, and shifts among GMC managed care plan participants, IPAs and contracted providers, which can cause some confusion and fragmentation in the service, in the service array. So right now I wanted to introduce Sarah Brooks from Sellers Dorsey. Sarah is, works on, I would like to just give you a little bit of her bio. Sarah works on initiatives in the Medicaid managed care world, Medicaid financing, provider policy and reimbursement. She brings nearly 20 years of experience in federal and state health policy. In her previous role as the Deputy Director of the Healthcare Delivery Systems with the State of California's Department of Healthcare Services, she oversaw approximately 500 staff across the three divisions of managed care quality and monitoring, managed care operations, and integrated systems of care. Having served with DHCS for seven years, Sarah managed the entire Medi-Cal managed care delivery system, including overseeing six models of managed care and 24 health plans which serve 10.5 million beneficiaries in California. I just wanted to be clear that Sarah is not currently representing the state. She did leave the state and she's a consultant at this time. But since the state was not able to be present, we felt like Sarah could share some of the measures that the state has indicated they are using to measure plan performance. So with that, I'm going to go through her slides while she talks. Sarah, are you with us on the phone?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks. So I'm on your first slide about evaluation of Medi-Cal managed care models.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. I do apologize that I'm not there in person. I would have liked to have been. Just to give a little bit of background, as Ms. Kupferi shared, I previously worked at the Department of Healthcare Services and was responsible for overseeing the Medi-Cal managed care health plans. Just to give another layer of background in terms of how California operates and how oversight of Medi-Cal health plans happens, there are two kind of departments that I would highlight for you. And you'll see them on the slide here, Department of Healthcare Services and Department of Managed Healthcare. So just to kind of bifurcate or differentiate between the two of them, DHCS is really the single state Medicaid agency. And so what that means is that they're responsible for overseeing the Medicaid or the Medi-Cal program in California and responsible for communicating with the federal government with respect to Medicaid and all of the requirements that, that are imposed in the state specific to Medi-Cal, but specifically to managed care here. And DHCS is really a purchaser. So you heard there, I oversaw 24 health plans when I was there. So we contracted with the Medi-Cal managed care health plans to provide those services. And that was a key responsibility of ours. Different from that is the Department of Managed Healthcare or DMHC. DMHC is really a regulator and that's a key and important function, obviously, as well. But looks to hold health plans that they are accountable for to what's called the Knox Keen Act. And so just to give a little bit of background, and that's a bullet on the slide here. The Knox Keen Act is, was originated in 1975. And it essentially has been the rolling kind of requirements for health plans, or most health plans in California with respect to things like quality or network adequacy, anything across the board in terms of just requirement specific to managed care plans. So today I'm going to talk a little bit about the four different items that are talked on the, or that are bulleted on the slide here, but I'll expand into them a little bit more. So just wanted to talk quickly about what each, what each of them are. First of all, healthcare quality. So, you know, really I think healthcare quality boils down to are individuals receiving the right care in the right place at the right time? So are people getting the services that they need to have a good quality of life and to ensure that they are healthy? Healthcare access, so do people have access to care that is reasonably close to them? And is it, and can they get in to see a provider within a reasonable timeframe? So healthcare access, that's something I'll be talking about today. I talked a little bit about the DHCS managed care plan contract that DHCS enters into with the managed care plans and the Knox Keen requirements. So we'll touch on those today. And then data quality is the final thing that we'll talk about. And I think, you know, it's important to just kind of flag data quality because it really tells the story of what is happening when it comes to a program or an initiative or something that's being implemented. And you really can't know whether it's being successful or not or measure it without having good data. So if we can move to the next slide, please.
Okay.
Great, so you've seen the slide before. This is the average quality composite score by plan model. You'll see that there are the six different models of managed care that are laid out here under the plan model type and then an average score on the right hand side. And so I know that at the last meeting I watched it and there was discussion about this slide and really asked about where the, where did this score come from? And wanted to kind of break it down and understand what's behind this actual score. And so I'm going to unpack that a little bit for you all today. Next slide, please. All right, so these are the kind of four different areas that comprise that average quality composite score by plan model that I just showed you. You'll see that 40% is attributed to healthcare quality with 20% being attributed to annual medical audits, another 20% to network adequacy, and another 20% to data quality. Next slide, please. So starting off with healthcare quality, as we mentioned, this is 40% of that total average composite score. You'll see, or I want to talk with you a little bit about what's known as the aggregated quality factor, factor score or the AQFS. And this is really a single score that tells how health plans are scoring overall in the state. So what it really looks at is whether or not health plans are meeting a minimum performance level on a set of measures or all measures in the state. And I'll talk a little bit about how we get there. So just to back up a little bit, the state imposes what's called, or DHCS imposes what's called the managed care accountability set, which was previously known as the external accountability set on managed care plans in California, so Medi-Cal plans specifically. And this is about 15 measures for reporting year 22 that the health plans were held accountable to. And really these measures report on how health plans are doing with respect to quality measures themselves. And on the next couple of slides, there are some examples. So let's move to the next slide and I can talk a little bit more. There are examples of what these measures look like. So you'll see on these next couple of slides that for 2020, there were, as I mentioned, 15 different metrics. Breast cancer screening as an example, comprehensive diabetes care, immunizations for adolescents. These are probably measures that you guys, you all are familiar with. In the interest of time, I won't go through all of this. But I think that, you know, wanted to mention to you that I included this detail in the, in the PowerPoint presentation so that you could have it. And I, well, obviously I can make myself available to you all after the fact to have some more in-depth discussions about the measures themselves or how they play in here. So I'm happy to make myself available, as I said. Again, going back to that managed care accountability set, for every measure in the managed care or MCAS, accountability set or MCAS, there is a minimum performance level. And so what that means is that in the United States, we have what's called NCQA or the National Committee on Quality Assurance. NCQA collects information from health plans across the nation. And for each of the different measures, then comes up with a score in terms of 0 to 100% in terms of how the health plans performed on those measures. In California, the minimum performance level is 50% of that national average that NCQA publishes. And so if a health plan hits 50%, then they have achieved the minimum performance level in California and they will not be dinged by the state. If they do not hit the 50%, then they obviously have not met the NPL. All of the different measures are then looked at with respect to these 15 measures here and are looked at to see, for one health plan, for example, how many of the measures did they hit the NPL for? If they hit 12 out of the 15 measures, then that is what is included on the aggregated quality factor score or the AQFS that I mentioned to you previously. So this is a way for the health, or excuse me, for the state or DHCS to kind of look across the board in every county for every health plan to see how plans are performing when it comes to quality. All right, so I'm not sure where you are, but let's move on to the annual medical audit slide.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, DHCS, or excuse me, 20% of this score that DHCS created is attributed to the annual medical audit. So just a little background, both DHCS and DMHC do audit or survey the health plans. A little bit differently in terms of timelines, DHCS audits the health plans annually while DMHC does it every three years. Audit surveys consist of different things. They may include document reviews, verification studies or interviews with health plan staff or representatives. But what ends up happening is that a report is issued after the audit, which includes all of the different findings or areas of concern that have been identified by the department. And the plan then has to enter into a corrective action plan with the department to ameliorate all of those issues. What is looked at here is how many findings were there specifically for a health plan? And then that is attributed to the 20%. All right, next slide, please. So with respect to network adequacy, again, you see that 20% is attributed here. DHCS certifies MCP or Managed Care Plan Networks to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, so that's CMS or the federal government on an annual basis through what's called an annual network certification. You probably have seen this before, but the different components that are included include provider ratios, time and distance, timely access, mandatory provider types and interpreter services. The managed care plans are held to network adequacy standards specifically. In Sacramento County, you all are considered a dense county. And so for an example of a time and distance standard for primary care, the primary care provider must be within 10 miles or 30 minutes from any member or anticipated member's residence.
I'm sorry, Sarah, could you, you still consider what kind of a county, a dense? Is that what you say?
Yeah, sorry, thank you for your question. So the way that the state looks at categorizing the different size of counties in California and looking at what type of network adequacy standards should apply, they grouped four different categories, rural, small, medium, or dense. And Sacramento falls into the dense category, so the biggest category, which means that you have greater than 600 people per square mile in your county.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Yes, of course. So important, I think, to note that I know there's discussion ongoing right now about the number of plans in Sacramento County and in San Diego County as well, but specific to Sacramento here. The network adequacy, the network certification would be completed before any transition happened to a smaller number of plans or to a larger number of plans. And so the state has to certify to the federal government whether or not the plan is in compliance and whether or not they're able to treat the number of members or beneficiaries that are assigned to them for services. And so if there were, for example, a decrease in the number of plans and more people were assigned to the smaller number of plans that were remaining, then those plans would need to demonstrate a higher level of network adequacy to ensure that they can provide coverage and care to the members that they then would have assigned to them. All right, next slide, please. I think the last slide here is just really about data quality. So again, we go back to the 20%. DHCS places a high value on, on data quality and has created what's called the quality measures for encounter data. This is also called the QMed. And so what it essentially does is it measures each health plan on how they perform with respect to completeness, accuracy, reasonability, and timeliness of data, encounter data specifically. And then those measures are used to create a GPA of sorts quarterly for the health plans to tell them how they're performing on data quality and whether or not they're at the level that they're supposed to be that the state requires. So this is the other 20% that is comprised of the average composite quality score that we started out to begin with. So that's kind of a summary of what is included, just to unpack it a little bit. I'm going to turn it back over to Shivon now to talk about proposed Medi-Cal beneficiary input process for Sacramento County unless there are any questions.
We do have one question from Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, not so.
Great, thank you.
Not so fast, Sarah. I do have one question. A lot of what you're talking about and the data and the audits and all of that, are those done for plans on a statewide basis or are they broken down into county? What, basically what I'm trying to get at is, do we have the data that would help us? Because we, most of us agree that we have to improve the outcomes and the delivery of services in Sacramento County. That's how we got here. But do we have the data on the local level, at the county level, that can help us determine the root cause of what the poor quality of care might be?
So that's a great question. With respect to what's published and what's issued and what's available to the county itself, for healthcare quality, there are aspects of the data, as I mentioned, for the aggregated quality factor score that does break it down by county. So that information would be available to you. That is the information that would tell you how well each plan in Sacramento County is performing overall on quality in terms of out of all of the measures. So what percent of all of the measures are they hitting that minimum performance level on? Annual medical audits are done at the plan level. So you are correct in your question there. There are kind of, there could be specifics related to Sacramento County included in the audits. So you, you might find those, but there aren't specific audits to just the county. Network adequacy is done by county and that information is posted online in the annual network certifications. But actually the department issued the new annual network cert for this year today. It was sent out and so it is posted on the website now. And then data quality with respect to the GPAs, let me think back here. That is done in an aggregated fashion as well. So it would be by health plan as opposed to broken out by county, by individual county.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. And we also have a question from Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just kind of prompted as I was listening to your response to Supervisor Kennedy's question on how the information is collected and how it might focus on discounting the communities and the people we represent. And I guess I'm curious because since the November hearing, we've gotten communication from a number of physicians, not a large number, but including, I know that obviously there was a opinion piece in the Sacramento Bee yesterday in the published edition. But I guess I'm curious when I see some of the things have been described. There's particular incidents, there's no patient name assigned to them. But they talk about either frustrations on behalf of the patient, but as being the physician, trying to get sufficient and/or timely care for patients that are, you know, in, you know, are presented to them and that they are working to try to get the proper treatment for. You know, in one case there's a cancer issue, there's another one, there's an orthopedic issue. And, you know, I think the point's made, we talked about the last time. We have a vulnerable population, obviously there are language and sometimes cultural challenges or barriers. And so I guess I'm curious, Sarah, maybe Shivon can add this, respond as well. How is that taken into account? I mean, you know, because we're having this conversation, people are coming forward in a, in a public forum and expressing concern as, you know, people who are entrusted with that care. And I guess I'm curious because if you have those situations and in some cases the delay has been counted, not in days or weeks, but rather in months, a lot can happen in a few months, both negatively as well as positively. I guess I'm curious is that, you know, it's one thing to collect data and to, you know, to know how you're doing, to get a grade point average. get a grade point average, but what's done in compiling what happened and in going forward while we, you know, live under the system that's been in place and now talking about some potentially major adjustments to that system? So I'm curious, how is this data used to improve so that that situation can hopefully be avoided in the future? Because you're talking about, you know, a half a million or more residents of all ages in this county that are, you know, at least in theory granted access to the systems and system plans, but when we know of situations, again, these may be hopefully limited number, but I don't know. And secondly, what's done then to help correct? Because someone talks about insurance, someone talks about handoffs, on and on and on, things that you, you know, folks are much more well acquainted with than I am. But I guess I want to know how this has been used, how it's used besides saying to somebody, well, you know, we got to change it because you're so low on the grade scale here. Okay, but how is that going to improve and what's being done to what I talked about in the last time, we talked about real time to actually make those adjustments and corrections that actually help get some of these situations addressed? And is there an ombuds person? Is there somebody that navigates? I don't care if you have five plans, 50 plans, or one plan, who navigates that and who helps sew that together? So anyway, long question.
No, great question. Great question. I'm going to take a shot at it and then see if Sarah wants to add anything. So I think, you know, and later on in the presentation, I was going to present this slide, but I'm going to pull it up right now just to kind of demonstrate that one of the things you're talking about is when consumers and beneficiaries don't get their healthcare needs met, then what? And the answer is the plans are required and the Department of Healthcare Services, the Department of Managed Care, do have grievance processes that folks can file grievances to try to get their situation remedied. In addition to that, there are community advocates and trusted partners, legal services, for instance, SAC covered, for instance, that are navigators of healthcare services and do help to troubleshoot and help to navigate people into the right care when they're not getting their needs met. And I'll just point out, I think one of the biggest benefits of the Health Authority Commission and your desire to do that is really to have a local body whose role it is, and we do have a Consumer Protection Committee on that Health Authority Commission, whose role it is to really look not only at the big picture data that Sarah was describing, but the individual level consumer feedback that we get, the complaints and grievance data that we get, so that we can really make recommendations and hold the plans accountable to meeting the healthcare needs of our beneficiaries here in Sacramento. So that is the role of your Health Authority Commission that you've evolved, is to do specifically that. And what I'm going to talk about in just a minute after I see if you have any more questions is what we're proposing as a strategy for beneficiary input that is kind of a two-way strategy, not only as a way for us to gather input, but a way for us to be able to strengthen the advocacy organizations in our community that are speaking on behalf of beneficiaries and can navigate those systems, because we really do need both of those things to be occurring for folks to get served.
Well, thanks, Siobhan. Again, I'm just going to extract from a letter and not read the entirety by any means, but give an example, even as you've gone through that pie chart there and talked about appeals process and customer satisfaction and trying to resolve, we have a physician that writes to us, this, you know, matter of public record, he came in through the clerk's office. And the example is used here, I'll just read a couple of sentences. "One of my patient's orthopedic specialist referrals for a longstanding spinal injury was denied due to lack of a recent MRI. In addition, the MRI was denied as there was no medical need for the MRI. Finally, after writing an appeal letter to plan, I was informed," this is the physician, "we'd have to wait six weeks for a decision. And then the patient's care was delayed for months as the patient and I tried to navigate this confusing. So my patient continued to suffer all during this time." And that's a good example. You've got these processes, but who's drilling down? To your point, and I know you're hearing this, but, and there's other examples here about folks with cancer treatments, with change in whoever was their plan provider, medical group contracts that don't align with that. So, and again, it comes back to patient care, and if it was me or my family member or anyone I know, I mean, you'd want the same level of care, whether you're Medi-Cal or private pay, or you have the, you know, the gold plan. And so I just, not that everything's always going to be perfect. I mean, and, you know, you wouldn't need dispute resolution if it was, but I, here the physicians who are, this isn't their only patient either, and they're advocating, and then they wait six weeks, and I don't know what it takes beyond that and then getting somebody lined up. It just, if we're going to improve care, again, irrespective of plans and health insurance coverage and so forth, we need to listen to those that are providing the service, those that are supposedly receiving the service, and see if there can be some, not just clarity, but some ability to expedite and to, when medical decisions are involved, that, you know, could be life threatening in some cases, but certainly pain and suffering. Yeah, I just, you know, it's been said, the state says we can do better. Well, you know, how are we going to get better if we just kind of use what Sarah outlined? Those are the metrics, they're the measures. They may have specific information regarding to Supervisor Kennedy's question about our county or not. We have a health authority. But I guess, you know, I guess the results will be dependent upon whether we actually do achieve, you know, a better level of care and how we do that timely. I guess that timeliness is really key in my viewpoint, so.
No, absolutely. And it is the state's role, I will. I know I talked about this in the last meeting, but just to reiterate, it is the state's role to hold those managed care plans accountable. And so one of the metrics they are looking at is how plans resolve those grievances and meet those needs once those grievances have been filed. And so the state's role is to hold them accountable as the state holds the contracts with those plans. And Sarah, I don't know if you want to add anything that I missed there?
No, I think excellent points. I would just add that the state does collect the grievance data at an individual beneficiary level, which allows them to do further analysis and identify where there are areas of concern. And so while I completely agree with you that we need to listen to the members and hear what's going on with them to determine what the next steps are with respect to Medi-Cal managed care, I did want to make you aware of the fact that that data is collected. In addition, there is an ombudsman, you asked about an ombudsman specifically, that the Medi-Cal or DHCS employs to make available to Medi-Cal managed care members as well.
Can I just weigh in one more thing here, though? But I'm not just talking about a grievance. I'm just talking, you know, we, but telling you to a grievance, you know, then it may have gone much further than, but, you know, whether it's this appeal procedure or some other ability to, for lack of a better description, either triage or to manage the situation using what we're supposedly about here, managed care, to manage it in a way that you avoid the grievance, that you hopefully get desired outcomes for your patient, but certainly for the providers of service, recognizing that the system may have holes and just because of, you know, not a number of professionals in a given, you know, and they can only see so many patients in a day and so forth. It just seems to me, you can have all the alignments for procedures and so forth, but if you're really doing the work at the ground level, then how you not just assign an ombuds person or deal with a grievance that may get resolved through the grievance process, but in the real time. And again, I get it, it's a big system, a lot of people, a lot of moving parts, and probably not enough folks to provide the services that are necessary and schedule surgeries and all the other medical procedures. But anyway, I'm glad we're having this conversation, and I would hope that as an outcome, that we'll be in a better place in a couple of years, so.
Yes, no, really appreciate your comments, and I agree, we shouldn't have to get to the point of a grievance, so we do need to ensure people are getting care without having to go. We know that the folks we serve are vulnerable and often can't initiate that process themselves, so.
Thanks.
We have one more question from Supervisor Kennedy.
Actually, I'm just going to agree with that, and thank you Supervisor Natoli. You know, basing, you know, success or failure on grievances and too high of a level, too much, requires the recipient to have a level of sophistication that some of our recipients do not have. So that may be one data point, but to me, it's not necessarily the most important data point.
Yeah, absolutely agree. Yeah, so I'm excited actually to go into this next part of the conversation because I think what we're going to talk about next may get to some of what, addressing some of what we're talking about. Last time we met, you talked about wanting some more beneficiary input, and so just this slide really talks about how the Health Authority Commission does have a Consumer Protection Committee, has done some work to try to collect some information. So for instance, they do, they have had presentations from legal services of Northern California from various homeless advocates to present on the voices, to lift up the voices of the beneficiaries they serve, as well as they've attempted to do some surveys with beneficiaries, but we received a small number of surveys back. And what we realized in that, though, is that we really need to work with those CBOs and trusted messengers where folks are receiving their services and care. And so I'm going to present to you a proposal for doing that. So we do recognize the need for not just one time, but ongoing beneficiary input. Sacramento is a diverse and evolving county, and the needs and experiences of Medi-Cal patients may differ based on geography, culture, race, ethnicity, and other factors. There's also a need to understand the current and the future experiences of beneficiaries and families in an ongoing way. We're expecting to see some significant changes over the next five to 10 years as the state seeks to implement new initiatives such as CalAim and other major initiatives that they're rolling out to the state's most vulnerable residents. In relationship to the Health Authority Commission's work, an ongoing stakeholder engagement process to support our community's ability to conduct oversight and monitoring of Medi-Cal managed care plan performance may be desired. So this strategy is a potential community-based approach for ongoing beneficiary input, and this is a way that we feel is important not only now, but in an ongoing way, so we can measure not only the impact of procurement, but the impact of some of these initiatives I discussed. The goal is to create a system that can be used not only by the county, but by the Health Authority Commission, so that any future decisions about Medi-Cal services and plans will be informed by consumer data collected from locally based qualitative and quantitative data sources. Based on resources that are available for this process, we're proposing the establishment of a four-pronged approach to ensure that all Medi-Cal beneficiaries have a pathway to provide feedback and feel heard, and that the local community-based organizations and coalitions who serve beneficiaries on a daily basis can share their perspectives, views, and experiences. We feel that working with those trusted CBOs and partners will give us ongoing information while also strengthening these organizations' ability to engage with beneficiaries, collect data about healthcare quality, and provide navigation and advocacy for beneficiaries when needed. And so to that end, we will create a beneficiary support toolkit for CBOs to be able to provide resources and information to the populations that they serve regarding Medi-Cal and access to care. This information will be translated into multiple languages and culturally appropriate. We will conduct key informant interviews and focus groups, not only with beneficiaries, but with those trusted organizations that serve them. And finally, we'll hear directly from beneficiaries through surveys supported or administered by these organizations that they regularly engage with. The scope of this will be really dependent on funding, so that's our next step, is to identify resources to allocate to this. So why this approach? What are the benefits? We do want to build capacity. The approach seeks to work with these CBOs and local advocacy support groups to share their experiences, build their capacity as a way through their fiscal and programmatic support. So this would be maybe in the form of stipends and technical assistance, so these CBOs could work with beneficiaries to collect information and provide advocacy. It's also presumed that as part of this work, challenges and needs will be identified that will be addressed through changes at the county and state levels in the longer term. And our proposed approach would provide a forum to ensure that these key groups understand the critical changes that will impact them and Medi-Cal beneficiaries, so as a way to give them information as well. And then we want to ensure strong and timely feedback loops and create a forum for advocates and community-based organizations and trusted messengers to engage in and share feedback about local Medi-Cal health access and benefits-related issues. This level of information would supplement the consumer satisfaction and grievance data collected by the state, because as we've just talked about, it's not enough just to have that. So as next steps for a smooth transition and improved managed care performance, one of the things we talked about is identifying and tracking key metrics. And currently, the Health Authority Commission and the county are working to identify how are we going to measure plan performance over time, and then how are we locally going to hold our plans accountable? Additionally, providing feedback to DHCS to inform the transition plan, one of the things that the board had asked at the last meeting is that we wanted to be able to let DHCS know how we would like to see this process take place around procurement, how we'd like them to hold plans accountable. So one of the things I did on your behalf is I drafted a letter that speaks to some of those concerns that you voiced before. I wanted to wait until the end of this meeting to see if more concerns came up, that we needed to amend the letter, and then with your approval, I'll go ahead and share that with you so that you can consider whether you want to send that to the Department of Healthcare Services. Additionally, I want to implement a strategy for collecting beneficiary input, and I'd love for your feedback today or sometime soon around what I presented. And then finally, establishing a plan for ongoing communication and updates to board and other stakeholders. What we realized is there's a lot of moving parts to this process. We want to make sure to keep our stakeholders informed. We are working with the plans and the Health Authority Commission currently to put together some convenings, some whiteboard sessions, and some other written communications that can be shared with our communities and our partners so that they know exactly what we're working on with regards to procurement. So with that, I am happy to take any questions, and that ends my presentation today. Supervisor Kennedy.
First of all, Siobhan, Slide 22, a potential community-based approach for ongoing beneficiary input. That's fantastic, thank you. It's one of the things that I was hoping to have come out of this. And I would assume there could be some funding from the state, but, you know, those talks will go on. I guess, you know, part of, this data thing just has me a little troubled, and that's that, you know, so much focus has been put on the number of plans, and, you know, I know that people are like tired of hearing me bring it up, but it still always seems arbitrary to me that, how many plans? It's like we determined the answer, and then we decided to how to back into the answer and quantify how we got to that answer instead of identifying the problem, you know, garnering the data and letting that determine the number of plans. And I'm not made a lot more comfortable by Sarah's, no offense to Sarah, but by, you know, her information about the fact that a lot of this data isn't even Sacramento County based, it's aggregated within the plan statewide. So I guess I'm still disturbed that we know there's a problem, we've come up with a solution, but we still haven't identified how we came up with that solution and why.
Yeah, no, it's a, I mean, it's a fair question, and what I'll do is just go back to one slide and then if Sarah wants to also talk, but I will, I will say that, you know, one of the things that, you're right, we identified a problem, that there are challenges in our healthcare system in Sacramento. One of the things that I know the state is looking at are these average composite qualities. So by looking at this model, essentially what they're saying is that they know that in counties that have two plans or less, the performance is better. So they are deducing from that, that the larger number of plans are seeing worse outcomes. So this is what that's built off of, but I do hear you and I understand that it's just one measure. I will also just mention that it is really the state who is driving the overall number of plans. It really was not a county decision, it's not something we've given input into in terms of the total number of plans. I think what we can continue to lift up is the importance of focusing on healthcare quality. You're right, regardless of whether we have two or three or four or five plans, we do need to focus on quality, network adequacy, and making sure whatever transition happens is the smoothest and nobody falls through the cracks.
And I understand that this is largely being driven by the state. I get that, which is part of my frustration, because the whole reason we started this was for local control. And it's And it's like, you know, you can have local control, as long as you do it our way. But the other thing is, is that, you know, unlike some people at the state, those of us who deal with counties on a daily basis understand that, you know, the old saying, if you've seen one county, you've seen one county. And so that's why I don't find this compelling. And it's not a criticism of you or your staff. It's more of a commentary to the state, and which is why I'm also frustrated that they won't come to speak to us. I do not understand the reasoning behind that. But I've heard it, but I don't understand it. It just, I still think we're making decisions without adequate data. And I guess I'll leave it at that. I'm talking in circles.
One of the things I will just mention as well, is as the Health Authority Commission's ad hoc committee, which is looking at not only what the plans have submitted to the Health Authority Commission in terms of what they intend to do moving forward, but looking at current plan performance, that's the group that will make recommendations to the Health Authority Commission, and eventually to the Board of Supervisors about letters of support. So they will be looking at local data, I guess is what I want to say, not just aggregate data for like, one of the plans across the state, but the local data.
But we've already presupposed that we're going to change the number of plans without having that information. I think that's a flawed process.
I see what you're saying.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just very briefly, again, I appreciate certainly the follow-up, and I think the letter that's, you know, been offered in draft form, that would come through our chair, I guess as part of direction, Dave, if that's what we choose to do. I concur with that. And I just, to the point that was being made by Supervisor Kennedy, in the draft letter, there was discussion about state engagement with counties. And I would just suggest that it's important that we talk about listening to the unique needs of localities while making decisions on behalf of the counties. And I would add to that, and the people we serve, again, somehow, in all of this, that needs to always come through, and not just be a part of the accepted, I guess, underlying portion of, you know, whatever process we're in, but that there's people who need the service, in this case, Medi-Cal, the health coverage, the access to that. And, you know, it's not we, this board's not providing that. And certainly, it's not the state, through Department of Healthcare Services, they're overseeing and managing. It's through physicians, through, you know, obviously, plan providers, and all of the associated folks provide that. And I guess I just don't want to lose a side of that, and I think it needs to be said, needs to be said frequently, and recognizing that maybe people are doing their best. But again, we heard it today, you know, hopefully we do better in the way we do that. And so, but I think that the draft letter and its content are pretty reflective of these thoughts that I weigh in on this, and I think it's a good thing, it's a reminder, and it memorializes what this board, on behalf of the people we serve, and certainly, you know, hearing from our professional staff, and I thank you and Sarah and others who got this back to us in a timeframe. And I, last comment I would just make is that, you know, why the state wouldn't come before this board at least have a conversation, I find that a little bit mystifying, I guess. I'll just put it that way, and leave it at that, so.
Yeah, and they didn't say they would never come. They said during a procurement process, they wouldn't be coming. But following that, I could, we could certainly invite them.
Well, we'll keep inviting them. And I get it, with RFP processes, there are certain sensitivities, and so I can appreciate if that was part of the response. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Siobhan. I also thought, I want to thank you for sending the letter early, so that we could take a look at it, and for all the information that you sent to prepare us before we got here. We do have some public comment, so maybe this would be a good time to, and then you want to come back and read the letter, or did you want to read it? Did you say you wanted to read the letter, or?
Not necessarily. I'll let, leave that up to the board. If you want us to read it publicly, we certainly can do that. I have it, I can put it on the overhead. But if you want to consider it and bring it back, that's totally up to you. My recommendation on timeline is the board will be, Department of Healthcare Services will be making decisions about the number of plans by the time the RFP is released in February. So I think the letter should be sent no later than probably early January.
Okay, well, maybe we can include it in the record, so that if people want to access it, they can, and, or what do you guys?
And I think it's already been included in the agenda packet, is what I saw.
Okay. So I guess at this time, we could take public comment, and then see if the board has any questions after that. Thank you, Siobhan. That was a lot. And I also want to thank Sarah Brooks, who is probably still waiting on the phone, who has been so helpful. We do have one public comment in chambers, Darryl Lane, or Darryl Lake. I'm sorry if I didn't read that correctly.
That's all right.
Hi, Darryl.
Hi. There's no way I can explain everything in two minutes. I'm a beneficiary. This board has appointed me before to serve on the Medi-Cal Dental Advisory Committee. I also served on Welch Space's Board of Directors as a community director. In 2016, I mean, I've been a Medi-Cal beneficiary since 2004. In 2016, I got a injury at work, ended up with a serious back problem. In the year since then, getting consistent pain management has always been an issue. Between the plan, the pharmacy, the provider, I have gone, in 2021 alone, one of my pain medications has been stuck in processing for so long that it's a month without treatment. I've gone an entire month, because it's sitting in pharmacy prodigies and all that other things. That's one issue. The other issue is access. In October 25th, 2019, it's going to be hard for me, please bear with me, I was diagnosed with cancer. And on top of it, the diagnosis and the ER being one of the coldest, most callous experiences I've ever had with a human being, the subsequent problems just made it, I can't even explain it. I'd left the emergency room, I went, that was on Friday, I went to the emergency, on Monday, I was in my doctor's office. The first thing I did when I got there, I signed the medical release, so they could go to UC Davis and get those emergency records. That did not happen. It never happened. Six weeks later, when I had already taken it upon myself to switch health plans, to switch providers, to switch everything, that was when, six weeks later, I got a notice, when I've already got my appointment through a different health plan, I get a notice from the IPA that the referral has been denied because they don't have the medical records. I cannot force the FQHC to go procure the documents. I provided the release of medical information, I went to the appointment as soon as I could after my ER visit. I did everything that I was supposed to do as a patient. But when it came down to it, referrals weren't made, paperwork wasn't processed. It took me spending, I think I spent 60 hours on the phone with Health Net, and the Department of Managed Healthcare, and all them that don't, didn't do anything. I spent 60 hours on the phone with Health Net, just so I could get in to the urologist for an assessment of the softball-sized cancerous tumor that was on my kidney. By the way, it's only 5% survivable. I fought every single day from October 25th, until when they luckily got me in early and did the surgery in early May. I was on the phone constantly. I was always looking for referrals. Why can't I get treatment? Why can't I get this? Why is my medication not at the pharmacy? You know? And in the meantime, my son's got an ingrown toenail, both of them, and I'm trying to get him referred to a podiatrist because he can't do anything, he could barely walk, and the referral's not being processed. And when you talk about, they talk about a grievance process. I have called Health Net on 20 separate occasions and filed grievances. And every time I filed a grievance, I get a blank form back in the mail that is their grievance form. And they said, "We spoke to you on the phone. Now, for the grievance process to be complete, you need to handwrite everything you just spent an hour on the phone telling them. You have to remember that. Handwrite it weeks later when you get the form, and then submit it back to Health Net. And if you don't do that, nothing ever happens." I had cancer. I wasn't getting treatment. I had no access to treatment. I had to fight for treatment. I filed grievances. Nobody ever reported it. It's not going to show up in a DHCS report or any reports, because they never did anything. They were never obligated. They listened to me on the phone and sent me a blank form, and that was it. So I just think, look, there's problems, but we need to make sure that when referrals are made, that they need to be processed, that the patient is notified if there are any delays or any problems. And these health plans and the providers have got to be held accountable to their parts and their responsibilities in this healthcare system. Because it's not my responsibility to go call and spend all that time with member services to get head cancer. It's kind of a no-brainer, right?
I, I'm so sorry for all that you've been through, and I think that's the whole purpose of this conversation. We're, we're trying to find ways to improve the system and improve the delivery.
I don't want anybody to have to go through what I went through.
And so we really appreciate you coming and letting us know your experience, so that, so we're better informed. I actually have my own personal experience with my children, who are grown, but who have experienced some challenges with access to. Supervisor Natoli has a comment.
Yeah, just thank you, Darryl, for your service on our county advisory bodies, but, and for, you know, spending afternoon and then sharing with us, obviously, a very personal experience and story, and one obviously that comes with a lot of challenges, and so certainly wish you well on treatment and so forth. But I wanted to ask, and maybe this is for Siobhan, or if Sarah's still on the phone, you know, in response to the question I asked earlier about an ombuds person, but if you have an ombuds person that can, you know, kind of run the gauntlet, and actually be able to, and whether it's you, in your case, Darryl, or anybody else, isn't, you know, obviously, there's some human limitations to, you know, taking calls, and so whoever the plan provider is, and, but somebody that can, you know, get to this issue of timeliness, of patient, you know, need, but also then, again, going back to what I said earlier, that in the, you know, in the present time, has that ability to, you know, navigate and work between all the folks, because I agree, that's not the patient's responsibility. As long as they meet their obligations to show up for the appointment, to notify their plans, and whatever else is a patient responsibility. So, you know, if you need to have 20 ombuds persons to do this, then that ought to be part of the key, and those ombuds persons are empowered, empowered to navigate on behalf of the, of the patient.
And if I may, up until I was sitting here this afternoon, I didn't even know there was a county ombudsman to deal with these issues.
I'm not so sure it's a county ombuds person, maybe a state.
The county, DHCS, they, you know, you get an answering machine most times, and when you're going through that kind of stuff, I don't want to hear an answering machine.
I would concur with you on that. So maybe I could ask him by Siobhan to weigh in, Darryl, thanks.
I'd like to thank Darryl for his comments as well. We hear these stories too frequently. And so, yes, absolutely. Part of the proposal that I presented today, there are advocates in the community who do help folks to navigate the system. We do need more of those folks, and we need those folks to be empowered to be able to, you're right, nobody should have to fill out a grievance form after they've already described their story on the phone and are waiting for treatment. That's not acceptable, and we will work to fix that.
So, and again, I didn't take it from what Sarah said, or you said that that was, that ombuds person was a county person. But if we need to, as a part of our role, again, recognizing there may be some limitations, and it may not always have the outcome that folks were desiring, but I don't need to qualify any more than that. If we need to do that, then I would say that that's where we could step up, as a part of this. If it's not offered, or provided for under any plans or any state regulations, we're not prohibited, I don't, I take it, from working with you and your department to employ folks that can be live persons on the phone, and that, you know, would have some authority, as much as we can provide to them, to intervene on behalf of folks. And so, Siobhan, if that's something that, irrespective of what this process is taking, the road we're taking on this, if there's a path that we can up our game on behalf of, again, the people we serve, then, you know, I for one, am more than willing to entertain that. I think that would be a good expenditure of dollars and resources to have that, in addition to what plans may do. Again, I'm not, you know, negating anything that people may do already to try to assist folks, but I think that would be an excellent, at least one way in a way, to address some of the concerns.
Agreed. I'm happy to bring back a proposal.
Okay, thanks.
I see no other board members in the queue. Thank you, Siobhan and Sarah Brooks, for your presentation, and we'll look forward to more of this as we move into January. I'm sorry, Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, I just wanted clarification where we stood on the communication with the state. We, I don't know that we
Okay.
...closed that loop.
So, and I might need to get clarification for, about process from Flo, from the clerk or county council. In terms of a letter, if the board's wanting to send a letter to the state, is that something that has to be voted on, or it is something that I submitted, and it's in the record at this point?
If the, if the letter is in the record, the vote, the board could vote to submit it, or delegate the authority to the chair if there's something that needs to be added or changed.
I'm prepared to vote to forward the letter. I was happy with the letter.
And I did make that one amendment, which I will re-forward to the board, that Supervisor Natoli lifted up about serving beneficiaries, not just the county. So I can include that and then resend it?
Sure.
Or do you want us to vote?
I'd make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion from Supervisor Kennedy, and a second from Supervisor Desmond, to send the letter. And please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And if you need to highlight, you might take a clip, assuming Darryl was willing, that was in the public domain here, you know, the pretty powerful testimony he just gave before this board, you might want to attach that. That might get somebody's attention in addition to anything we put in writing, so.
Yeah, that was.
Will do. Yeah, happy to do that.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have about 10 callers in queue.
Oh, I forgot, we have phone, public comments. I'm so sorry.
No problem.
Okay, we'll move to the callers.
Please transfer the caller.
I might have gotten ahead of myself.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes, please.
Great, thank you. Good evening, or late afternoon supervisors. Bill Serna, you're actually my district supervisor. My name's Sarah Teasdale. I'm a primary care physician in Sacramento County. And Mr. Supervisor Serna, I've had the opportunity to speak with you, with some of the work I do with the residents for advocacy at UC Davis. I had hoped to come to make the comments in person, but unfortunately, I've been seeing patients in clinic today. So I have been a physician in Sacramento County, working at an FQHC since 2012, and I am speaking today in support of Sacramento County joining the state and every other county in our state besides San Diego to hold our insurance plans more accountable, and increase oversight and accountability. There is an abundance of evidence that proves our geographic managed care model does not improve the health of our county. In fact, it's making our community members' health worse, and leaving us with worse Medi-Cal, with the worst Medi-Cal health grades in the state. This is not something new. And I will add that if you guys have not reviewed the White Paper written by the Center for Health Policy and Research, written by Joy Melnicoe and Patrick Amano in 2019... for Health Policy and Research, written by Joy Melnicoe and Patrick Amano in 2019, you should consider referencing that. It's easily searchable online. But it has a great history of the GMC pilot program, and how it came to be, and how it's not kept up with our surrounding counties that chose different ways to deliver their managed medical. So it's a primary care doctor in Sacramento for the last nine years. I've witnessed over and over again how our GMC five-plan system ultimately fails my patients and fails my, the people that I'm paid to work for. Our patients, right now, currently, do not have access to specialty care, whether they are, and it is no better now that we have River City Medical Group than it was the five individual plans. I read the, the examples that my colleagues in medicine sent to you guys in the agenda packet, and I could not agree more.
You have 15 seconds.
Okay. Today, for example, one of my patients came to me, and her insurance plan has changed multiple times. I have complained to the state, I've complained to the health, our medical director, and nothing ever, ever changes. So in summary, since they have cut off my time, I hope you, you have an opportunity to move our county forward and to pave a different path in health that uses our health advisory board, but also elevates us to our surrounding counties, and I hope we can take advantage of that, and not just try to fix our five-plan GMC model with more bureaucratic red tape.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Hi caller, can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
Hi, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Abby Corso. I'm an attorney with the National Health Law Program, and just calling in to make comment to support the board in doing what it can to provide additional oversight and monitoring of managed care in Sacramento County. The report that you received today shows that there are serious deficiencies that require your attention, and that's all my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hola, mi nombre es Jose Garcia. Mi familia y yo confiamos en medical para nuestro seguro médico. My name is Jose Garcia. My family and I rely on medical for our health insurance. Con el sistema de medical como esta, ya tenemos dificultades para conseguir citas para mis cuatro hijos cuando están enfermos. With the medical system the way that it is, we already have a hard time getting appointments for my four kids when they are sick. Si el sistema cambia, espero que sea más fácil para mi familia recibir servicios y atención. El hecho de que tenemos medical no significa que debemos de recibir menos servicios de los que pagan por su seguro. If the system changes, I hope that it will make it easier for me and my family to receive services and care. Just because we are on medical doesn't mean that we should receive less services than those that pay for their insurance. Tengo un trabajo, pero hablo, pero no hablo inglés bien. No tengo la misma oportunidad de conseguir un trabajo mejor para poder pagar por el seguro médico de mi familia. La calidad de vida debería ser lo mismo para todos, no solo para lo que pueden pagar. I have a job, but because I don't speak English well, I don't have the same opportunities to get a higher-paying job so that I can afford to pay for medical insurance for my family. The quality of life should be the same for everyone, not just for the ones that can pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Jordan Lombardo. So I was, I was diagnosed with Crohn's disease at 16. I'm now 21. My CCS was terminated last year, and I had a very tough time getting connected with a new GI, new care. My, my primary source is Molina Healthcare. So my case manager approached me with an idea of possibly getting a letter of agreement with UC Davis, which I wasn't able to before. I had gone just about six months without my treatment, and I was hospitalized twice. I was, could not work, I had severe pains. But when I was able to, to move into that, and, and he pushed it through, basically, I was able to receive the treatment, and now I've had, been able to receive my treatment whenever I needed it. And also, I had a very great, as far as helping out in any situation, anything I need, they're there. Any questions I have, any medical needs, they're there to help.
Thank you, sir. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comment. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Katie Andrew, and I am an Associate Director of Health at Children Now, a statewide advocacy and policy organization that focuses on a wide range of issues impacting children. I am also a Sacramento County native, and live and work only blocks from your chambers. Children Now supports the recommendation by Sacramento County and the Sacramento Health Authority to reduce the number of medical managed care plans in the county in order to increase oversight and accountability. We believe that fewer plans will result in an important, I'm sorry, in improvement in fragmentation and reduce churn and confusion among children and families enrolled in the medical program, as well as improve the overall quality of and access to care that these families and members of Sacramento County community deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you, and good afternoon. This is Diana Douglas, on behalf of Health Access California, the statewide consumer advocacy coalition. We are calling in to support the direction of Sacramento County and the new Sacramento Health Authority Commission to increase oversight and accountability over medical managed care plans, including the effort to reduce the number of plans by picking only those who deliver the highest quality care with the most access for enrollees. While most counties in the state have one or two medical managed care plans, Sacramento has been the exception with five or more. Our GMC model began as a pilot program decades ago, and we have traditionally had many plans serving our enrollees. Yet, this has never resulted in better care. In fact, Sacramento lags compared to other neighboring counties in most measures of quality and delivery. Sacramentoans are choosing between and churning between often a great number of plans, many of which fail to meet even basic standards. Sacramento medical managed health plans generally have poor quality and access scores, and notably, poor scores compared to plans operating in counties with fewer plan options. It is time to do something different and to pick the best plans and hold these plans to a higher standard. Fewer plans do not mean fewer providers, it means less fragmentation, less churn of enrollees between different plans, and less confusion for medical patients, and hopefully a more holistic effort at providing population and preventive health. We are not seeking to change away from the GMC model, but we are asking within the GMC framework to narrow down plan options, but Sacramentoans and enrollees can experience less churn between low-quality plans who come and go, and can benefit instead from increased plan quality, access, and stability. Thank you so much for hearing my comments today.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Hi caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Liz Helms, I'm the President and CEO of the California Chronic Care Coalition, and I'm here today to express our deep concern with the recent proposal. I'm sorry, after listening to the heartfelt testimony of the people that are going through horrific issues, I'm, I'm going off the comments that I wrote because I do want to address some of the other issues. We represent over 16 million people in the state of California that have chronic conditions. And we have built the infrastructure where people can file complaints, and we have a portal to do that. In fact, we did a report on an independent review, and we support the work that the Department of Managed Healthcare is doing on that. However, let me, let me explain to you what that really looks like. By the time someone goes to, to file a report, they're sick. They are desperate. They don't know what to do. So they go and file a report because they found out a way to go. And they could certainly use our portal, but we have an amazing infrastructure built for them. We, we haven't been able to get them to mount people into it that we would really like to, that we can help. But they're sick. They shouldn't have to do this when they're sick. I went through, that took me a year and a half to get care, so it made me an advocate. So I, I so appreciate the county board supervisors for really paying attention to the conversations that are going on. There are better ways to help. We have a fragmented system that looks like completely through medical, completely. I don't know that two plans or three plans are going to make that better. There needs to be a redesign in the system where we really address the whole person's care for the person that needs the care, and I think we could do that, and we'd love to work with you, hand in hand, to make that happen. Thank you so much.
Before the caller hangs up, could we get, I didn't get her name and defer to who she represents?
Are you still there, caller?
Yes, I am. It's Liz Helms, and I'm the President and CEO of the California Chronic Care Coalition, and we are based in Sacramento.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Frost and Supervisors. My name is Vern Brizendine, and I'm the President and CEO of ADNA Better Health California. ADNA is one of the five medical managed care plans in Sacramento County. ADNA is NPQA accredited and part of CVS Health, the largest health services company in the United States. We employ over 800 people in Sacramento County across our health plan, pharmacies and stores, and over 30,000 employees statewide. Whether there are five plans or less, we must aspire to address root causes of healthcare challenges, including social determinants of health, through a deep collaboration between managed care plans, providers, and the county. A centerpiece of CalAim is the Enhanced Care Management and Community Support Program, which establishes a more comprehensive approach for people with intensive needs. ADNA has committed to offering the entire menu of 14 community supports in our network. We applaud the efforts of the county to support this aspirational change by ensuring collaboration at the Delta of Healthcare and Social Services. We believe that the future of medical in Sacramento County requires both aspiration and collaboration. Aspiration to build a more well community, one where the zip code you live in and the wealth of your family does not predetermine your risk for asthma, diabetes, abuse, or the chances of you or your mother surviving birth. To achieve that bright future, we must collaborate across government, nonprofits, private business, and medical members to empower our community to be as healthy as possible. ADNA looks forward to our continued partnership with Sacramento County, and thanks you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Teresa Ogan, and I am here today representing the multipurpose Senior Services Program at California Health Collaborative, a nonprofit organization that works to promote the health and well-being of all residents in California, but specifically, the needs of the underserved, especially those who have limited access to resources. So our work directly impacts the health members of Sacramento County, which is why I'm here today. The recent decision by the Department of Healthcare Services to reduce the number of managed care plans for Sacramento is very concerning to our organization, and would have a negative impact on the efforts to improve the health and wellness of residents in Sacramento. Many of the patients and program participants will lose access to their trusted medical providers, their prescription plans will change, and may not cover what they're currently taking, and the continuity of care will be disrupted. This model change is particularly concerning now, as we continue to navigate the pandemic, which has been made worse by both the Delta and Omicron variants that are developing or prevalent now, and the stability within our healthcare system should be a top priority. California already lacks providers, with a shortfall of more than 40,000 registered nurses and 5,000 physicians, and this proposal will, will force patients to find new providers when there are shortages across the board. And I'm less concerned about the number of plans, and more concerned about the process of assuring the adequacy of the provider networks. In addition, reducing the number of plans offered to patients removes significant competition, which potentially raises costs long-term for the state, and removes an important incentive for managed care plans to attract members by providing the best care. If DHCS or Sacramento County wants to change the delivery model, a legislative administrative process is in place for counties to make such changes, and would allow for public transparency processes that include the communities and members most impacted. And I am pleased, I've heard a lot of information today, and pleased to hear-
You have 10 seconds.
...that the county is looking to engage the community members and CBOs, and I recognize the time limitations. I ask the board to call on DHCS to resend the proposal cut, and engage with local community providers and, and members to, to, to develop solutions that avoid disruption in care as we make this change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yeah, hi, my name is Scott Tsuko, and I'm on the volunteer leadership team for the California Chronic Care Coalition, and I'm a liver advocate. I've taken a look at one of our members' profiles, the American Liver Foundation for Northern California, and I took a look at their medical advisory council from Northern California, looking specifically at Sacramento and surrounding areas. And I looked at the specialists of their liver disease specialist, and I went through and inventoried all the plans to see who were part of those networks. And what I found was it ranged from 0% to 70%. So when people say that this change, pushing all these patients down into two plans, and I don't know what the adequate number is, but when you push all these patients down to two plans, the adequacy within these networks, and there's no guarantee that these specialists for liver disease, which covers 100 different liver diseases, are always going to be available, but these are the specialists for some of these rarest diseases. So that's what I'm concerned about, are these liver disease patients that could be lost and not have access to specialty medical care. I do want to say a second part, and that is, thank you Supervisor Kennedy for asking the question of, it doesn't make sense, the numbers, and the slide that everyone keeps referencing, slide number 11, that Levon showed, or Devon showed, the slide has data that they won't separate. So when they say the plans, that the geographic managed care plans rate lower than the other, great, can we separate Sacramento from San Diego and have a comparison? Because what we're hearing is that they won't do that. Why won't they do that? It's not selling the narrative of where they want us to go. Do they want us to go to a single payer? Is that what this is for public healthcare? Is Senator Pan creating a landing page for himself with the geographic managed care plan in Sacramento? Because that's what legislation poses as a question. So why the rush? Why the lack of dialogue? And I think you have to question people's motivations. I know my motivation, it's liver disease patients, and I think I see the heart and soul of the supervisors. It's your citizens that rely on medical. I don't know if I trust some of the leadership that are making these decisions-
You have 10 seconds.
Yeah, so I think we look behind the smoke and mirrors- Yeah, so I think we look behind the smoke and mirrors, get past the diversionary tactics, and say, why is Senator Pan, why is the state of California pushing this through without dialogue? There's an answer there, and I don't think we're getting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and please transfer the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Monica Lee and I'm calling on behalf of the California Pan Ethnic Health Network. We are a statewide health advocacy organization dedicated to addressing racial and ethnic health disparities. We support the direction of Sacramento County and the new Sacramento Health Authority of increasing oversight and accountability over Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans, including the effort to reduce the number and just pick the best plans. Ms. Brooks talked about the minimum performance levels that are set for health plan outcomes. In looking at Sacramento plans, it's important for you to know that several of the plans are ranked in the bottom quarter of all Medicaid plans in the country in critical areas, including childhood immunizations, cervical cancer screening, child access to primary care, and asthma management. Some plans perform much better, indicating that the difference is not about available providers or aspects of the county other than the health plan itself. The state also surveys Medi-Cal beneficiaries for their experience with their healthcare. Four of Sacramento's five health plans rank in the bottom five health plans in the state for consumer satisfaction with the plan. Most Medi-Cal members do not choose their health plan, rather they are auto-assigned to a plan, and it's not fair that Sacramentoans are assigned to health plans that year after year fail to provide adequate healthcare. We do want to appreciate the proposal for ongoing community-based beneficiary input, which has the potential to provide timely information and improved care in the country. Thank you all so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, and please send the last caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, hello?
Yes, please, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Great. My name is John Landefeld. I'm a primary care physician in Sacramento, and I'm calling in first of all in support of reducing the number of managed care plans in Sacramento. This, I appreciate that everybody on all sides of this issue is concerned about how to provide the best care for Medi-Cal beneficiaries in Sacramento County. And fortunately, we do not need to rely on opinions. In this case, we have data that shows that Sacramento Medi-Cal beneficiaries experience among the lowest quality access and patient satisfaction scores in the state. This is in contrast with counties in which fewer managed care plans provide that care. And as a frontline provider, I can attest that this is directly related to the convoluted and labyrinthine process through which providers and patients must navigate the five managed care plans to actually achieve the care that patients need. This is in contrast to some of the arguments that I've heard today that suggest that reducing the number of plans will reduce the number of providers. Health plans are not providers, health plans are payers. The providers in Sacramento County will not reduce if the number of plans reduces. I appreciate all of the thoughts that's going into this conversation today and hope that the supervisors do support this move.
Thank you. And that is your last caller, and I've closed the public comments. Thank you, and we have some comments from Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you very much, Chair. This is, it came up in my mind after the first caller, the physician called in and was specifically concerned about bureaucracy and how that does not help patient outcomes. And I think we've all experienced something of that in our lives. And it reminds me of a comment that was made during a commission meeting, a health authority commission meeting, in which one of the members said, well, look at Los Angeles, they've got one plan, but they actually subdelegate to about 50 plans. I guess this is, you know, aimed also at our very capable and dedicated vice chair of the Authority Commission, and that's that, you know, with a plan subdelegating to a plan, then subdelegating to the IPA, I just hope that as we continue to move forward that we will be, you know, very careful to look at how we can minimize that and minimize those layers, which are just going to add to the bureaucracy potentially, so.
Supervisor, may I comment on that, if I may? Having listened to this discussion the whole time, I think it's been very helpful. But to your point, I think we're at a really important turning point right now on this. And we, some of us have been dealing with this issue for a long time. And there is an opportunity to achieve really a new level of oversight and a new level of performance by these plans. But there's also the risk that this could evolve into the status quo. I mean, having been a state person for a long time, I know how this could evolve. So I really think through the Health Commission and through the work here, we have to stay on this. We had the discussion with the state about the number of plans, and you heard what the feedback was on that. But they're going to have this process and they're going to do contracts with these plans. So there's still an opportunity for us to affect this system. And I think we really ought to stay on it to make sure that there is accountability measures built into those contracts and consequences if these plans don't perform the way they're supposed to.
Thank you, Bruce. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I would just say thank you to Bruce for his, just the most immediate comments. I think that, listening to the testimony, that it may be that as a part of our letter, even though we'd already given the blessing to the content, it's still before us here that, maybe to that last point, that it's our intent, and stated very clearly as a county, to, you know, do our utmost best to, you know, see accountability within the framework of this and, you know, and put it on the record. Because I think, as I listened to this testimony, recognizing differences in views and takeaways from what was said and we heard from physicians and we heard from some of the plan providers and as well as advocacy organizations, and I think it was a good, you know, a good sample of, you know, probably a host of different thoughts and experiences from different perspectives. I wanted to ask the question, in addition to what I just said about, I think, you know, building into the letter, our intent as a board of supervisors, as a county, through, you know, Bruce and Siobhan and others, and through our county executive, to, you know, see to it that there is that accountability and not to just, you know, accept what's being determined here. But I would also frame that potentially by asking the question of the state, recognizing what they've said and what Siobhan put forward in the DHCS feedback, is that their intent on going forward and that they will make a decision at least in this time schedule. But I guess I would ask the question, and maybe it was already referenced here, what sort of process besides putting out a draft RFP and taking public comments, which, again, I don't know how voluminous those were, I trust they were probably, if statewide, it was probably a heavy volume, did they ever take into account that they might have listening sessions, just as we have listened here on a couple of occasions now regarding this, and actually taken into account and reached out to, you know, the Darrells of the world, the providers of the world, obviously they're going to hear from the plans, and to really make that a part of their thought process as they're going forward and making determination and have set in motion, and I appreciated what Bruce said at the last hearing, that, you know, some of this may be driven by the ease of administration. I don't know that to be the case, and, you know, I'm not going to accuse anybody of that, but I think that's a fair comment. But, so I would, again, maybe be a little more, after having heard today's testimony and reflecting over the last few minutes, suggest that, again, it doesn't have to be in a mean spirited way, but to say that, you know, did you really take that into account, you know, in an inclusive process, one that did that outreach, not post what you do, but as a part of your preparation? And of course, they might back it up and say, well, we took in all these comments over three months and you've got, you know, 1,000 different people weighed in. But did you really have the opportunity to listen to people and hopefully hear them as you reflected on this, on qualitative care, access of care, provider frustrations, you know, patient frustrations, as well as the positives, you know, whatever those might be? Because they certainly put forward this chart that ranks, you know, ranks folks based upon the various, you know, metrics that they measure by. So I don't know, Siobhan, again, not to make your letter any length here, but I, for one, and is interested here with my colleagues, would say that maybe we ought to push back a little bit. We, you know, they're going to make the decision whether we say we accept it or not, but I think we can certainly say what we think about the process, from a little I know about the process they use. But also, I think to the point going forward that, you know, it's our intent as a board, with our health authority and certainly with the people in this county, to, you know, see to it in any way we can, that, you know, we improve, but also where we're doing well, that we hopefully maintain that, and in all the things that we've talked about. So I'd belabor it enough, but I would just offer that as some comments. I don't know how you might frame that in a letter that would come through the chair, but.
Yeah, happy to include some language about the, our desire for them to strengthen beneficiary input processes. And they did tell me that during 2022, they are intending to reach out to beneficiaries to ensure that there's a smooth transition, but certainly we'll put some language in for your consideration.
Yeah, but that's post their decision being made, you know, and so it might be, be so bold that maybe take a timeout and, you know, at least point in time, hear from some folks. And again, I offer that as, you know, as a comment, but, you know, all the things say, no, we're going ahead, they told you that, since the last time we met, but, you know, I appreciate looking forward, but how did you get here beyond what you've already explained? So, anyway, enough said.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So first, let me start by saying thank you to everyone that called and explained their experience, whether they're a provider representative, a physician. To Darrell, who I think offered us the most humanized testimony tonight about what's in front of us. And as someone that had someone very near to him suffer from renal carcinoma, it's particularly touching and I certainly empathize with the frustration that Darrell's gone through. But, you know, I guess the thing I wanted to say that's different than what I've said in the past about the subject, really speaks to what Bruce said about accountability. And while I understand that things can sometimes gravitate towards a status quo in the land of state of California, I understand it, but I don't accept it.
Right.
And so, you know, my disposition has been really simple since the beginning of this consideration, which is, you know, I have no allegiance to a plan, no allegiance to a provider, no allegiance to a brand of healthcare provision. I have an allegiance, like I think all of us do, to the people that we represent and need help the most. And if there's a better mousetrap out there and we're not pursuing it, shame on us. But that only works if there is accountability. And so, you know, I appreciate Supervisor Natoli's comments just now about maybe refining the letter a bit to incorporate some language about how this board in this county, regardless of the outcome, will, you know, perhaps see a new day in terms of how we stay on top of things and make sure that regardless of who is selected or how many plans, that the accountability measures that hopefully are incorporated into this new day for Medi-Cal in Sacramento County are going to be one that is really steeped in, you know, applying the appropriate scrutiny at the right time to make sure that we see the utilizations go up, utilization rates go up, we see specialty care work more effective and efficiently. Don't want to hear more stories about waiting 30 days for pain meds. Don't want to hear about cancer patients that can't see their oncologist in a, you know, reasonable amount of time. You know, I don't know how you measure it in totality, but there's smarter people than me that can do that. But I think it is this board's responsibility to ultimately hold the system, hold the providers accountable. And I'll continue to tell anyone that comes knocking on my door, and there's been several in recent months, and I'm sure my colleagues have encountered the same thing, from different entities, plan providers mostly, that are concerned about the limitation of the number. That's kind of the main theme that I see. It's just real simple. It's like, hey, if you, if you can provide the best care out there, terrific, and go compete and let's see where the cards fall. But this is not about histories with different providers, it's not about what we think we know about plans, it's about some measure of certainty that we're going to have better outcomes for patients, period.
Siobhan, thank you for helping us work through all this.
Thank you.
It was more, more complex than we thought, but I think I have confidence that we're on a better path, and I want to thank you for helping us with it.
Madam Chair, I believe we need a vote.
A vote?
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor in a second, I believe, isn't it?
Yes.
And the maker of the motion accepts the comments that both Supervisor Natoli and-
Let's be tired.
To send the letter, I believe?
Oh, we already voted on that.
They already voted on the letter.
Did we?
Yeah, we voted on that at 4:54.
All right.
We already voted on the letter.
Okay.
But we can reconsider it, though.
We can re-vote on it, no. I will amend the letter, if that's still okay under the current vote?
I think there's consensus to amend the letter, yes.
Yeah, and then I'll send it with the amendments.
Is that okay? We can amend it under the prior vote?
Should we reconsider it? Should we reconsider it?
I don't think it's necessary. I think that staff has, I mean, the board has directed staff and I think you understood it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Scared me for a minute there.
Madam Chair, again, and certainly through the chair, it's effective means of communication, but in the past, we have had letters signed by all five members of the board supervisors, so there's no question that our chair is supported by, you know, the majority of the board. And so if that didn't make this too cumbersome to send the letter, I would offer that, certainly through the chair, that we, you know, have this penned by all five of us if we are in concurrence with that, so.
Send a stronger message. Sounds good.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please. Item, item three is the results of public opinion survey of county residents and recommended fiscal year 2022-23 budget priorities.
Good afternoon, Chair Frost, members of the board. Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and I'm noticing that we actually have the wrong PowerPoint pulled up. So while I'm talking, maybe we can pull up the other PowerPoint presentation.
Can you please pull up the other PowerPoint? I'm asking Metro Cable.
And in the interest of time, I'm going to skip my introductory remarks and hand it over directly to Dave Metz from FM3 Research. So FM3 conducted a resident survey on behalf of the county. Dave's here to talk about those results. After he does so, I will have a presentation on recommended priorities for the fiscal year 2223 budget. I will mention that Dave is on a schedule constraint and needs to leave us around 6 o'clock tonight.
6 o'clock for a flight. Okay, thank you.
Apologies, I'm afraid it's from Oakland, so I have a tight timeline to get back. But thank you very much, members of the board, for the opportunity to be back with you today. I'm Dave Metz from FM3 Research, and I'm pleased to present the results of our survey of Sacramento County adults to assess their priorities as it relates to the county's budget. We have a detailed set of findings from the survey, including many different demographic and geographic breakouts of survey respondents that have been sent to you under separate cover. I'm going to walk through some of the key highlights of the survey and their implications from the budget, and would be happy to answer any questions that you have. To start with, just a little bit of a review of the methodology of the survey. As we discussed a couple of weeks ago, the objective of the survey was to get the most random and representative possible sample of Sacramento County adults. In order to do this, we drew a random sample of residential addresses within the county of Sacramento, matched those addresses to a variety of databases to get landline phones, wireless phones, and email addresses for residents who live at those addresses. We then sent out invitations via postcards, text messages, email invitations, and telephone calls on both landline and wireless phones to reach residents at those addresses, and conducted the survey in- conducted the survey in nine different languages, as you'll see listed at the bottom of the slide. We were in the field for a period of about two weeks to make it possible to reach out to local residents at different days and different times of day to ensure that we could have a diverse group of respondents. And once we got that survey data back, it was compared to U.S. Census data for the county and statistically weighted appropriately to make sure that our respondents were, in fact, a representative sample of county residents. I'm going to skip over some of the demographic summary slides because essentially what they show are the ways that our sample was, in fact, aligned with what census data shows is the population of the county, and move into some of the key findings of the survey. We began the survey by asking the respondents a question that's the initial question in many surveys that we administer, whether people think things in their area are headed in the right direction or off on the wrong track. And as you'll see here, we have a slim majority of county residents who believe that the county is on the wrong track, about one third who think it is headed in the right direction. I will hasten to add that this is in no way a sentiment that is unique to Sacramento County. This is basically what we see in any large urban area in California right now when we ask these questions.
No, everybody's on the wrong track?
I'm sorry?
Everybody is on the wrong track?
Pretty much everybody in large urban areas is on the wrong track, yes. We were in the field in Los Angeles earlier this month. It was about 48% wrong track. Oakland, a couple of weeks ago, was 69%. San Francisco, 53%. So this just gives you a sense of the, I think, prevailing mood that we're seeing in many communities in California that are facing some of the same challenges that Sacramento County is. And what is driving that sentiment overwhelmingly, when we ask people to name in their own words the most important problem for Sacramento County government to address, is homelessness. An outright majority of respondents, 53%, mentioned that, volunteered that in their own words, as the most pressing problem facing the county. Another 13% mentioned affordable housing and rent. You'll see as we move down the slide a little bit, another 5%, the cost of living and poverty. Many of these obviously interconnected issues, but it shows the centrality of those concerns for local residents. It is exactly the same in pretty much every other urban area that I mentioned to you. Homelessness easily the number one concern that is on local residents' minds. And you'll see, just to give you a feeling for some of the ways that local residents expressed themselves, these were some of the things that respondents told us in their own words were their biggest concerns about issues facing the county, some of them very specific, some of them broader, and articulated in a variety of different ways. But the vast majority of the responses did, at least in part, mention homelessness as a major concern. That finding was reinforced in a follow-up question where, rather than asking respondents to name the issues that concerned them in their own words, we asked them to rate their level of concern with a variety of issues facing the county, labeling each as either an extremely, very, somewhat, or not a serious problem. They are ranked here by the proportion that rated each either extremely or very serious. And you'll see that, once again, homelessness is at the top of the list with a level of urgency that no other issue comes close to. 75% rating it extremely serious, that dark orange bar on the left-hand side. Just behind that is the cost of housing, which a majority of residents also rate as being an extremely serious problem. And then it's a pretty significant drop off to the balance of the list. There are a wide range of issues that at least three in five local residents rate as being a very serious problem. The economic impact of COVID, drought, crime, government waste and mismanagement, cost of healthcare, all falling into that category. The next couple of slides highlight some of the differences between different demographic groups in terms of their responses to these issues. I'll move through these fairly quickly because frankly, the similarities across most issues are much greater than the differences. And especially the consensus that homelessness and the cost of housing are the top two issues facing the county is one that is universal, not just across the different racial and ethnic subgroups of the local population that you'll see here, but also when we look at the results by supervisory district. These are the top two issues in each of the five supervisory districts by a pretty clear margin as well. I will hasten to add, I understand that redistricting has recently been completed here. The numbers I'm sharing with you in this presentation reflect the previous supervisory districts, but because we know the exact physical address of each respondent, we will be able to resort this data by the new supervisory districts as well and provide that to you if it's helpful. We also see some, oh, thank you, some breakouts here by responses among different subgroups of the population, including those who speak a language other than English at home, which is about a quarter of our sample that fall into that category, as well as those who have some personal connection to homelessness themselves. I will note that one out of five respondents in our survey indicated that they had experienced a period of homelessness themselves. Another roughly one in five said they had a close friend or family member who had. So this is something that is a, not just an abstract concept to many of our respondents and residents here in the county. It is something that has been a part of their own lives and obviously is a pressing, immediate, and personal concern. Note here, by the way, the distinction when we look at the cost of housing between homeowners and renters, not surprisingly, it's 17 points higher among members of the population who are currently renting their place of residence. So that takes us to some questions on the county budget itself. We asked the respondents to indicate how closely they follow issues that relate to the county budget, and we gave them some language based on actually the recommendations that you all made when we were designing the survey, clarifying the divisions between some of the services the county provides and some services that other local governments provide, and asked them to tell us how closely they follow issues related to the county budget. 41% say they follow them at least somewhat closely, but this subject, this question is subject to what we pollsters call social desirability bias, what the rest of you might call fibbing, which is there is sort of a natural inclination to say, yes, I pay attention to issues that are important, like the county budget. For that reason, we pay a lot more attention to that top number, the proportion who say that they follow the issue very closely, and that's a relatively small number, only about one in 10 county residents saying that they are closely attentive to it. There is a perception by about two in five residents of the county that the county is going to face a deficit as it starts its budget process. That's twice as many as believe that the county will be facing a surplus, although we have about a quarter of our respondents who acknowledge that they don't know, and a close to similar number who say that they anticipate a balanced budget. But there is also a broad perception that the county is in need of additional funding. Three in five respondents say they see at least some need for additional funding, including a third who see a great need for additional dollars. I will note in a variety of other research that we've been doing around the state and around the country, we've seen a lot of awareness and attention to the investments that are coming from the federal government and will be flowing to state and local governments. But repeatedly in those surveys, we see a recognition that those investments are unlikely to meet the full needs that local governments are facing for a variety of services that they provide. So that takes us to the core of the survey, which are resident priorities for the county budget. We came at this question in a number of different ways. In the first, we asked the respondents about a list of aspects of life in Sacramento County that might be considered contributors to making the county a good place to live. We asked them to rate how important they thought each of those factors was to contributing to the county's quality of life. And then we had a follow-up question where we asked them about a variety of government services that might be aimed at achieving those qualities, and asked them to indicate how satisfied or dissatisfied with the way they were being provided right now. So the, I think probably the easiest way to look at this data is to put the results of those two questions together. The proportion that rated these topic areas as being either extremely or very important compared to the proportion who told us that they were satisfied with the way that those services were being provided. On this table, the horizontal axis represents the proportion who said, rated each of these as extremely or very important services. The vertical axis represents the proportion who said that they were satisfied with the way services were being delivered to achieve those goals. For the satisfaction scores, we omitted people who said that they didn't know enough about that service to indicate whether they were satisfied or dissatisfied. As you look at some of the items that are listed here, obviously, some of these are services that not every resident sort of receives directly or pays close attention to, so we limited our analysis to those who knew enough about it to express an opinion. The red box in the lower right-hand quadrant of this graph represents those items that residents were most likely to say are very important to giving the county a good quality of life, and areas where their satisfaction tended to be lower in relative terms. And not surprisingly, they largely are the same issues that residents rated as the biggest concerns facing the county. Homelessness stands out as by far the issue that they view as most important and where their satisfaction is lowest. Affordable housing, the results are not as dramatic, but it clearly does pair those two sentiments. And then you'll see items like drug use treatment and mental health services, which we know from other research, many local residents perceive as being closely connected to homelessness and contributors to causing people to experience it. And then another number of other items like streets and roads, planning for growth, having clean and safe properties, that all have some connections to how housing is provided and in what fashion it is, as well as obviously transportation. Job creation also fits into this sector as well. Obviously, there's still a lot of continued anxiety about that right now, given the overall condition of the economy. Now, we also came at this question a somewhat different way, asking our respondents to imagine that they had a hypothetical $100 of county budget money, and to consider how they would allocate it across six different budget priorities that you'll see specified here. And remember, we had some conversation about how exactly to define these six categories. If they were to divide all of the spending about equally, you can sort of imagine how those bars would line up, and they do want to see some funding allocated to each of these six priorities on average, but there are a couple that stand out with respondents allocating on average more than a fifth of the money available to them to those services, public safety, including law enforcement, and then reducing homelessness, which again is a key priority for local residents. Infrastructure gets an investment of 1740 on average. That's about what one would expect if we had an even division of these dollars. Slightly lower priority on parks and environmental protection. We saw before that's an area that residents view as important, but also are largely satisfied with. Now, there are some modest differences in the way that different subgroups of the population allocated funding across these six categories. You'll see some differences here by supervisory district. Those in districts three, four, and five tended to allocate slightly higher amounts to public safety relative to what we saw in the other two districts, somewhat more of an allocation to homelessness in districts one and three. But overall, these differences are pretty modest. There is much more consistency in the way that residents are allocating these dollars than there are dramatic differences between them. Also, some differences when we look at it by race and ethnicity, as you'll see here. White residents more likely to allocate funding to public safety by a pretty wide margin than are residents of color, in particular, African-American and Asian and Pacific Islander residents of Sacramento County, much less likely to prioritize that. The investment in homelessness that residents desire much more consistent across racial and ethnic lines. When we ask people about that, when you look at it by the, whether people are homeowners or renters, there is a difference in the amount that people want to see invested in public safety. Homeowners much more likely to allocate more dollars to that category, but again, very little difference in the desired investment to homelessness. And interestingly, that is also true when we look at whether the resident themselves said they had experienced a period of homelessness or had a close friend or family member who had. Essentially, the same amount is allocated to homelessness regardless of whether an individual resident has had that experience themselves. Finally, we had a few questions in the survey that focused on the direct delivery of services to local residents. We asked them to indicate whether they had had contact with a county department or employee over the past two years, dating back to just before the start of the pandemic. A majority of our respondents said that they had. And as you'll see on the next slide, here are the departments that they told us that they had had contact with. Now, a number of them had had contact with more than one department, which is why these numbers add up to more than 100%. But you'll see the ones that are most frequently mentioned here, the sheriff, health services, waste management, county clerk responsibilities, child, family, and adult services. You'll see a pretty sizable group down there toward the bottom of the slide, 19% that say they had contact with another aspect of county government. And to confirm some of the conversation we had earlier, this largely reflects residents' misunderstanding about what services are county services. Looking at the specific things they mentioned there, it was things like the DMV, PG&E services that were clearly provided by city government or by the state or other agencies of government rather than ones that are county departments. The type of contact they had was generally either on the phone or in person. Again, these numbers add up to more than 100% because we had many respondents who said they had contacted the county through multiple means. And overall, those respondents who had contact with the county indicated that they were satisfied with their experience. 69% expressing satisfaction overall, more than twice as many as expressed dissatisfaction. These numbers are pretty comparable to what we see in general when we're doing polling for local governments and asking a parallel question. It's usually right around 70% that are in the satisfied category.
Excuse me, Dave.
Yeah.
Supervisor Desmond has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dave. This is great information. I'm curious, those last few slides, can you, if you needed to in the future, could you break that down by residents in the unincorporated area versus residents of the, okay.
Yes.
Be very curious to see some of these broken down that way. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for every question in the survey, we can break it down by geography and also by all of the demographic groups I've mentioned. And we would be happy to do any further analysis you'd like that segments the respondents that way.
That's good.
Here you'll see a number of the responses offered by those who indicated they were either satisfied or dissatisfied explaining their experience. For those who are satisfied with their contact with a county employee, they generally focused on either having a successful resolution to their problem, the courtesy with which they were treated, or the timeliness of the response that they received. And you'll see some examples here of the kinds of things that county residents said were the nature of their satisfactory experience with county government. A number of them mentioning different types of services they received, but others simply saying that they felt they were dealt with politely and they got the answers that they were looking for. For those who were dissatisfied, the thing that they felt sort of most gave them the feeling of dissatisfaction was elements of courtesy, feeling like they were not treated with the courtesy that they would expect. Others wanted a faster resolution or didn't feel like they got an adequate resolution to their problem. And as you'll see on the next slide, here are some examples of the kinds of things that people said were the reasons they were dissatisfied with the service they received. Some of them, I think, were giving comments that acknowledged that it was the nature of the beast. It may not have been entirely possible for the employee they contacted to give them a satisfactory resolution to their problem. But others were saying that they expected to be treated differently than they were. And again, these responses are frankly not much different from what we see from satisfied and dissatisfied residents who are contacting government at just about any level. To break this out a little bit more precisely, we asked our respondents who had had some contact with county government how satisfied they were with each of these aspects of the service they received. Again, for each one, 61% or more are expressing satisfaction. The courtesy and professionalism with which they were treated by county employees stand out at the top of the list, something that three quarters of respondents were satisfied with. So that takes us to the conclusion of the survey. I think there's lots of interesting data here, but the fundamental conclusion of the survey was one that I recall from our initial conversations, I think a lot of you predicted was probably what we would see, which is the central concern that people have about homelessness primarily and about housing costs following that. In every question where we asked about these issues, those were really the dominant concerns. The things that they most wanted to see county government address felt the lowest amount of current satisfaction and one of the places they would most like to see dollars allocated. Other things that stood out on the list as high priorities, where they thought their level of satisfaction could be improved, included issues like mental health services, programs to address substance use issues, and of course, issues relating to housing costs and affordability as well. All of that said, although these are obviously challenging issues that are regional and statewide in nature, as well as being ones you have to grapple with here in Sacramento County and areas where residents are feeling some level of frustration, they nonetheless have very positive views of county government, and in particular, those who have interacted with county employees overall overwhelmingly have come away satisfied with the experiences that. have come away satisfied with the experiences that they've had. So I will pause there and happy to answer questions you may have about the survey data.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. I know you're on a tight timeline here, so I'll try and make it quick here. For those data sets that you presented here or cross tabs, I'm not sure how you're characterizing them, that where you broke it down into supervisory district, how free from confusion do you think the data is for those districts that primarily overlap with incorporated areas?
So we were not relying on the respondents themselves identifying what supervisory district they were in. We mapped it using their physical address.
Okay.
We did see, as I think some of you predicted, when we asked people in the survey whether they lived in an unincorporated area or in Sacramento, many of them said Sacramento, when we knew their address was in an unincorporated area.
Right.
So for our analysis, we relied on the objective data of where they're physically located as opposed to what they self-reported to us.
Okay, yeah, the reason I ask is for those questions that were about kind of the quality of government in general or leadership or, you know, those types of things that are kind of inherent to both county and municipal governance. For districts like districts two and districts one, where we're overlapping quite a bit with the city of Sacramento, I just want to understand that there's some high degree of confidence that for the most part, they're responding, knowing that they're talking about county governance, not municipal governance.
Yes. The questions were all framed to talk about county government, and we did have some text before we broached that subject to explain to them the different divisions and responsibility. All of that said, I'm sure there was still some confusion. It's just the nature of the beast. One thing we can do is, and I don't know how big the sample sizes will be, but for those districts that include both unincorporated and incorporated areas, we could probably separate the results within the district and let you know if there are differences between those two subpopulations within your district.
That would be interesting to note. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, again, recognizing your time constraints too, I, again, just a couple of quick questions, but certainly found this very interesting, certainly helpful, I think, as we embark on other discussions from tonight on. But appreciate the thoroughness in the sample. I think it was a pretty sizable sample. I wanted to ask though, that kind of going back to your breakdown by city and area, you had six of the seven incorporated cities. And again, maybe the sample, I don't know if you had, I trust you through your process, at least touched with some of the folks in the Delta. And again, it's a, you know, fairly sparsely populated as compared to other areas of the county, but not necessarily have to call out Ileton, but you know, it is the seventh city that's not in, not on the list. I was just curious, did your sample touch at least Delta residents?
It did touch Delta residents. It was such a small sample that it rounded down and didn't appear on the table, but I'm looking at the top line results here and it's listed. We did include it.
Okay.
It's just a very small sub-sample.
Okay. And then just on the one chart, it kind of jumped off at me a little bit and maybe because of the small sample, but when you were looking at cities and towns on that page 74, in the city of Galt, a lot of that mirrored, you know, other numbers, but there were some really low numbers and one that got my attention because we provided the service by contract, and that's providing humane animal care and control services. Where only 14% was satisfied in the city. And again, we provide the service, they do some of it through their local police department. And I guess I just, again, maybe the sample was so small that you had three people and four people and two of them. So, and there were a couple of other numbers down further on that. Again, that's not, no reflection, obviously have elected city council and I think pay attention to those needs as well, but I just was curious. So we can have more time. I know we can follow up with you individually or collectively, so.
Absolutely. And just two things I want to note there, as you point out Supervisor, we have that asterisk on the number to indicate that it is a very small sub-sample.
Yeah.
And that means that it's, we're dealing with so few people that there's a lot of statistical noise there. Secondly, these numbers are showing you total satisfaction. That does not mean that everyone else was dissatisfied. It means that there's a large group that potentially has no opinion, and a service like animal control is one that not every resident is, often has a lot of experience to evaluate. So we can take a closer look at those numbers, but I suspect it is a combination of a big don't know and a small sample size.
Okay. And that helps, so thanks. Thanks for, again, thanks for the work. And again, I know this will be used in a lot of different realms probably, but I think it's really good information and I'm, you know, glad that we embarked on the endeavor here, so.
I am too. It's extremely helpful. Thank you for being so patient and waiting so long, and we're hoping we didn't make you miss your plane.
I should be okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Really appreciate your work.
Thank you very much. And I apologize for having to depart. If any of you have follow-up questions, if there's other things that we can pull out of the data for you, we're available on an ongoing basis to do that.
Okay, and did you have one more thing?
No, just, I want to offer a suggestion, maybe in the condensed fashion, that as a part of our budget document this year that we might include, at least, you know, anecdotally or, you know, as an appendix, I just think it's important because we aren't going to do this every year, I don't believe, but I do think that it's worthy of note, it has currency to it, but also I think as we're going to get into a discussion about budget priorities and so forth, but I think this would be helpful, so, and however we link that online and so forth, because I don't know that everybody's going to access this immediately, but I think it's helpful for a lot of different perspectives in talking about programs, you know, some policy arena, and certainly budgetary aspects, so.
And Amanda's still going to be presenting the budget side of it.
Right, I know she is. I just want to make sure it gets attached though, because it's a good body of work with all the tabs and so forth. And this data was good for supervisory district up until about noon yesterday, so, before we voted on the map, so. Or no, actually, it's about four o'clock yesterday, so anyway, thank you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Metz, so much. Appreciate it.
And if you have, you know, additional questions or data sets that you want to look at, if you can let me or Amanda know, and then we can funnel that information to Doug so he can take a look at it.
Thank you.
I'll ask Metro if they could bring up the other PowerPoint, please.
So, I was going to say, well, that's being pulled up, and here it is. So, so following on the findings of the resident survey that you just heard from Dave, I'm now going to address the recommended budget priorities. So first, just to set some background and framework, the purpose of recommending budget priorities for the board's consideration, possible revision and approval, is to guide the budget process for the upcoming budget year. As envisioned by the approved community engagement plan, so you approved that community engagement plan in connection with approval of the recommended budget for this year. We're recommending that these priorities apply to the use of general fund discretionary resources in the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. And this is in recognition of the fact that other resources have restrictions on use that limit the board's discretion and ability to apply budget priorities more broadly across funding sources. In order to maximize the board's flexibility in the use of discretionary resources, we will continue to recommend that costs be funded with the most restricted funding sources first. So before establishing priorities for new or enhanced programs, the recommended priority framework first considers that the county must comply with certain obligations that require the use of discretionary resources, and that a high priority should be placed on existing policy commitments. This framework also recommends prioritizing maintaining existing service levels before recommending funding for new or enhanced programs. And maintaining existing service levels will help ensure that the relative satisfaction that was expressed by residents for many services provided is not diminished. Finally, we recommend that new or enhanced programs be focused on the most critical and urgent needs with specific countywide and unincorporated focus areas identified based on the input received through the resident survey. So consistent with the framework I just described, the first recommended priority is complying with the county's legal, financial, regulatory, and policy obligations, including providing mandated services, ensuring collection of revenues, and complying with the general reserves policy. The second recommended priority is maintaining existing service levels budgeted for county programs, improving effectiveness and efficiency where possible, and limiting the extent to which reductions in categorical revenue are backfilled with discretionary resources. So the wording here with regard to effectiveness and efficiency is intended to convey that while we want to maintain existing programs and service levels, that doesn't necessarily mean doing things the way they've always been done, and we will of course be looking for ways to improve service delivery and gain efficiencies where possible. Additionally, the wording with regard to categorical revenue is intended to convey that in general, the county's practice is to not backfill with discretionary resources, but also recognizes that in the interest of maintaining program services levels, program service levels, that may in some cases be the recommendation.
Excuse me, Amanda. Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, ma'am. Just on the item that you just called out, will it be your intent to then point out to the board, both in the budget document, but certainly in your recommendations of how we've improved efficiencies and effectiveness via whatever direction that comes from, whether it be from departmental initiative, coming from county executive, from board, the framework for certain service delivery? So I think it's important because, you know, and if you don't do that, it just, you know, it's presumed that some of that occurs and then the budget's before us. And so I think, you know, if you can call some of those things out, and we may note them throughout the course of a year over time, I think it really focuses on what you just said, which, you know, I certainly take to be the way we approach, you know, much of our budgeting, but certainly service delivery. But I think it's important to reference that from year to year, so you have that as a reference point in addition to, you know, an ongoing budget, budgetary priority process that may evolve as well. I just think that's important to call those things out. If there have been things done that have consolidated or have improved efficiencies through, you know, technology, through a human initiative, whatever it might be. So I just, I would ask that we at least have some specific references. It may not be in every case, because obviously that drills pretty deeply into the budget, but.
Yes, no, absolutely. And I mean, I think, I think that there may be examples, you know, I don't want to presuppose what's going to be recommended, but there may be examples where, for example, something is recommended to be funded that requires an upfront investment that will result in long-term savings. So I think we could, we could see those sorts of efficiencies being identified that way. Or it could be, you know, an example of a different, a different way to fund an existing program and sort of calling that out in the budget document, you know, through a description of an accomplishment or how the, how the program is being provided.
Because if you just did it through, when we had it on the agenda yesterday, the salary resolution amendments that come through, and you see the workforce growing and/or deletions or additions or, you know, transferring to different positions within departments and so forth, it's kind of hard to know unless you went back and referenced all those over time and then matched them up with budget and program delivery and so forth. So I think, you know, because we see different budget documents and they're available to the public, but I think one of the ways to, as you just noted, I think you can, you know, be clear that, you know, as, you know, as we look at positions, as we look at contracts, because again, that's the other pieces, you know, unless you know how to read the budget document or follow, you know, closely enough, a lot of the service delivery is done through contracts. That comes through on a separate, is in the budget, but it comes through on a separate track. We see those typically in June or throughout the course of a year. But that's how you deliver a lot of services to people, particularly in the, in the human service arena. And I think it's important to note that. And, you know, and it also reflects back to the survey. The point I was going to make is that, you know, folks may call the county, but we may have a program provider that actually provides that service that may be the ones that are responding to the issue, but they are a reflection, hopefully in a good way, but that could be in the other way, and that's part of the contract oversight and management, is that they are acting on behalf of the county. They're providing those services via, you know, the arrangement that they have and get funded. And so I think that's an important element not to lose sight of, and I know it became very evident when we were in the recession, because as we reduced programs and made, you know, some drastic budget cuts, a lot of our folks that were, you know, working side by side with, you know, with county personnel, their, their jobs and their programs were the first to be cut, and then, then came county positions as well, and it was big in the cuts. And as we've added back, we've continued to build back smartly to your point. So I just point those out as observations, but I think ways to tell the story, and hopefully in a way that fairly reflects what we do, how we do it, and who provides that service through the county, either directly through our personnel and or through, under contract by folks that are providers of the service that we employ to do that job with us. So I don't know if that makes sense, Ann, or not, but.
Yeah, I mean, we can take a look at ways in which to do that, and we need to give it some more thought about how it would make most sense, but we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I'm not trying to give another assignment, it's just that, you know, it's bigger reflection on what we do and how we do it. I just think, you know, that's an important piece, and to also tell the story that we're not just accepting status quo, although status quo may be the best way to do it and, you know, performing well. I just think that that's important piece, particularly with some of the survey, and the skepticism that comes around government in general, just about how we deliver service. And yet, we're doing a lot of things well, and that gets reflected in the, in the survey in different parts, so, thanks.
Great. Thank you. The third and final recommended priority is funding new or, new or enhanced programs that focus on the most critical and urgent needs with the following priority focus areas identified in a survey of county residents. So this is really where we're incorporating what we heard through the resident survey. A countywide focus area of addressing homelessness and its impacts, including housing, mental health, and substance use, and unincorporated focus area of improving the condition of streets and roads. So the focus areas identified in this priority are a reflection of what we heard from county residents about the most critical problems and issues for the county to address. While homelessness, its impacts, and related issues are clearly top priorities for county residents, we also thought it was important that a focus area be identified for unincorporated residents who rely on the county for services that are provided by cities to their residents. And improving the condition of streets and roads was not only a top priority overall, but the issue that stood out most clearly for unincorporated residents. And finally, I also wanted to touch on a few additional considerations regarding the recommended priorities. The first is that while these priorities would apply specifically to budget recommendations for discretionary funding, those recommendations would also consider the recommended use of other funding sources. So for example, as you know, housing and homelessness has been identified as a top priority for the county's use of ARPA funding. So any recommended use of discretionary resources for that focus area would of course be considered in conjunction with ARPA funding recommendations. Consistent with past practice, or past practice and recommendations, and with the goal of ensuring a structurally balanced budget, we will continue to recommend that one-time funding sources be used only to fund one-time costs to the greatest extent feasible. And finally, the budget priorities approved by the board would be used to guide budget requests by county departments starting next month, is when we'll be starting our budget process for next year, and ultimately to guide the county executive's recommended budget for fiscal year 22-23 that will be subject to budget hearings in June. The intent is that these priorities would provide guidance and alignment with regard to budget recommendations, but they are not intended to predetermine or supersede the board's authority to make decisions during the budget hearings. And that concludes my presentation. Our recommendation is to approve budget priorities, either as recommended or as you would, or as revised based on board input.
Thank you, Amanda. Supervisor Natoli has a comment.
Yes, just a comment. It was in, embedded in some of the slides that we saw, or at least one of them, and I just, it's an important point to make because as much as throughout the years, and we will continue to, you know, not only focus on the budget, but struggle at times when revenues fall short, or the programmatic and service delivery needs in this county, you know, far outstrip and, you know, or more demanding than dollars you may have available. And I think all the things that you point out are going to be important for this year's upcoming budget consideration, but the point I wanted to make is that ever how precariously we did it, we balanced our budget year in and year out, and we, you know, we borrowed internally, we just paid back the last internal borrow from the recession of, you know, 10 years ago. And again, it's a very public process, but one where that is, not only was required in law, but, you know, whatever that's taken, and sometimes some very difficult, painful decisions relative to workforce and program delivery. But this board, or one of our charges is to, you know, approve a balanced budget. And again, it may be done in a lot of different fashions, but it isn't done with smoke and mirrors, and it's done in a way that if we have to make tough decisions in order to do it, we've done that. And we're coming to a period of time, obviously, when we're looking at some additional federal dollars and potentially state dollars coming to our community to be invested, many, you know, most of those dollars are one-time, and some other opportunities. But I just wanted to point out that. and some other opportunities. But I just wanted to point out that we, you know, spend the time here, you spend the time in your role, and certainly the county executive, all the departments and the folks that contribute to the budget to bring a balanced budget. And again, it may be precarious at times, but it's, it has been balanced and we haven't been, you know, in a, in a situation, even though sometimes the ongoing programs, you know, have drawn upon one-time funds, and that's something we've had to do in order to, I think, maintain service delivery to different at-risk populations, but certainly to the general populations in this county and the communities we represent. So I wanted to point that out. And thank you for your effort, Amanda, and certainly Ann and all the folks that contribute on an ongoing basis to our budget process.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We, we do have one person on the phone, or we did have one person on the phone, I believe, and I don't have any public comments in the chambers.
And we still have that person on the phone. Could you transfer the caller, please?
And then we need to vote to approve it after that, I guess. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, hi. This is far and away better than that Deloitte Trash Survey. Way more robust. One thing I didn't see represented was funding priorities by race. What I did see was law enforcement conflated with public safety. Public safety takes a myriad of forms and is way too broad of a term to draw anything meaningful from the use of that term and what people actually want when it comes to public safety. However, even with that, the fact that they would like to see only around 25% of discretionary budget going to that tells us that the current budget is out of whack. One thing I did see was that crime as a concern drops off 10% among Black and Asian residents, which likely would be represented in less need for funding from those two groups if we had that breakdown. Plus, given that POC in particular experienced over policing in our country, state, county, and city, it stands to reason that they aren't going to ask for more of what doesn't work, but likely to point to preventative measures being funded to ensure crime isn't a required avenue for folks to take in order to survive. And no, people aren't criminal by nature. They are driven to it. People aren't criminal by culture or ethnicity. They are driven to it out of desperation to survive. Anyway, we'd also need to get into more detail surrounding policy implementations, especially surrounding preventative measures that the community would like to see funded. I could definitely see this leading to more detailed workshops, which would provide community a chance to hear of potential policy proposals to address certain elements, maybe even given by those that have experience in such policies, and use that as a follow-up to this. Once again, I must say, much, much, much better job. Way more holistic of an approach than the Deloitte thing. I would say that in a certain areas, I would like for historical disenfranchisement to be accounted for when it comes to the weighting of certain areas. The views of a white, upper-middle-class homeowner should matter less than that of a person of color who has experienced homelessness and has seen the effects of overpolicing. The latter likely has a much clearer perspective on what doesn't work, given negative interactions. While the former likely hasn't given their community,
Yeah, 15 seconds.
Hasn't given their community, isn't overpleased to the point of it being a meme. Also, if a staff recommended that you keep funding the same despite the survey, how about outreach to communities on what they'd like to see if your suggestion that things will be changed while funding remains the same is real? Please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes your public comments for item three.
Okay, so we need to vote, I believe. I want to thank Amanda for, I think the public opinion poll is going to help us in a lot of areas moving forward. And thank you for setting priorities for the budget. It'll kind of guide us and help us stay on task, hopefully. But we need a motion and, and we need to vote on this, or is?
Yes.
Well, I will, the chair will move approval for the budget priorities. And we have a second by Supervisor Desmond.
The unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, item number four is the Housing Trust Fund Fee Update, introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16.89 of the Sacramento County Code to update the fees on non-residential construction to fund very low-income housing. Wait full reading and continue to December 14th, 2021 for adoption. And the environmental determination is not applicable.
Good evening, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, the Planning Director, here to give the staff a presentation. I'm going to start with some introductions. Here with me today, also with planning, is Todd Smith and LeAnn Mueller. We have Troy Givens, the Economic Development Director, LaChelle Dozier, the Executive Director of SHRA, and Christine Weickert, also from SHRA. And then on the phone, we are going to have our consultant with Kaiser Marston, David Dozema, who prepared the NEXUS study to aid. In case you have any detailed questions on that NEXUS study, I may need his assistance in responding to those. So with those introductions, the first slide here talks about the need for affordable housing. I know I probably don't need to say too much about that. The last presentation was a great lead-in, and the board members are always reminding staff about the need for such affordable housing. And in fact, the board had identified this as a key priority back in late 2019 for staff to bring this forward. We tried to work on it concurrently while also working on the housing element. And so we are finally in front of you today. And this slide talks a little bit about the need for affordable housing, as well as the county's responsibility to produce affordable housing pursuant to the regional housing needs allocation in our housing element. We are supposed to be building a substantial number of affordable units equivalent to almost 1,400 units a year, which is quite a mind-boggling number and challenge to do. For this effort, we did conduct public outreach. This is in addition, again, to the outreach that we were conducting related to the general housing element, but specifically around this ordinance. We had a kickoff meeting in August. We had a couple of focus group meetings, first with development-related stakeholders, and then with housing advocates in September. We had a workshop at the Planning Commission in October. We did hold that as a workshop because this is a county code amendment. So they typically don't make formal recommendations because it's not a zoning code matter, but we did go there anyway to get some of their comments, and they are in this presentation. And then we were also in front of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Oops, sorry. So with regard to the Housing Trust Fund Fee, this is a one-time fee paid at the issuance of building permits. Things can be reassessed, and I was asked that question. If a building evolves over time, building inspection does evaluate, like if it came in at the warehouse and then it were to move to like an office building, they would look at that and potentially reassess that. So that was a question I was asked during the briefings. This applies to development of new non-residential buildings in unincorporated Sacramento County. The funds are transmitted to Housing and Redevelopment Agency to aid in the funding, the local gap financing for affordable housing. And over the past 30 years, have aided in the construction of over 3,000 deed-restricted affordable housing units. The fee was established in 1990, and the fee has not been updated or increased since 1992, and it is not indexed to inflation. And the reassessment of this was an implementation action associated with the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice submitted to HUD. There are approximately 50 similar programs in California, and there are five cities in Sacramento County that have fees. This slide shows some of those comparable fees in other jurisdictions. The cities of Rancho Cudopah and Citrus Heights used the same fee as the county where they incorporated and have not updated, updated those. Elk Grove has updated theirs, as has the city of Sacramento. Folsoms, I do want to point out, has a footnote on the slide that isn't explained very well on the slide, but they basically have a sliding scale. And so up to 200,000 square foot buildings, it's the full fee of $1.70, but it does reduce based on the size of the building. So between 200 and 250,000 square feet, it's 75% of the fee or $1.27. From 250 to 300,000 square feet, it's half of the fee or 85 cents. And then for large buildings of 300,000 square feet or more, it drops to 25% of the fee, which by my math would be 42 and a half cents. Placer County is currently only the Tahoe, Sierra Nevada area, but they are apparently considering expanding it. And from the staff discussions we occasionally have with other planners, we know that a few jurisdictions, as a result of their housing elements, may be looking at their fees. It's hard to state that with any certainty. Elk Grove's housing element references evaluating their fee. Citrus Heights has asked what we're doing, as has the city of Sacramento. So we'll have to watch and see what other jurisdictions do in response to their housing elements. This slide shows the county's existing fees, again, set last in 1992. There are two studies to support this fee update. The first is the Housing Trust Fund NEXUS Analysis prepared by Kaiser Marston. This addresses the legal requirement to implement an impact fee and establishes the maximum fee level that could be assessed based on the cost to provide needed affordable housing to workers. And then they also prepared an analysis context and recommendations document with the items shown on this slide. Just to, again, frame up the basic NEXUS concept, the concept here is that when new workplace buildings are built, when new non-residential buildings are built, there are new jobs, and a share of those jobs are at lower paying wages. Those lower paying wages result in new, lower-income households and an associated demand for affordable housing. And so the fee that is collected here is a contribution to that local gap funding that it takes to build affordable housing. And the NEXUS study does assume that projects would get 4% tax credit.
Excuse me, LeAnn. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, LeAnn, before we leave this slide.
Certainly.
And first of all, thanks for bringing this forward. I've been asking for this for some time now. So it's been a glaring omission that we haven't updated since 1992, in my humble opinion, but I'm glad we're here nonetheless. When it comes to the, the NEXUS, I can't help but suggest, and you heard me say it during our briefings, that when it comes to commercial development, non-residential commercial development, and trying to have a justifiable nexus, a legally defensible nexus associated with that type of development when it comes to affordable housing, I would argue that the nexus is actually twofold, even compared to the development of market rate housing and the application of an affordable housing fee on market rate housing. When we look at the NEXUS typically on market rate housing for those jurisdictions that do have those types of affordable housing fees, the nexus is the consumption of land that could otherwise be used for the provision of affordable housing. Well, that logic and that rationale, that nexus, in my estimation, is equally applicable to any use that's going to consume that resource, vacant land, that is not being used for the provision of affordable housing. So I would argue that when it comes to this slide in particular, the nexus is certainly what you've listed here, but I would say that there's another bullet, which is also the consumption of land resources. And so I just want, I think that's important enough to point out for those that, that may not feel as strongly as I do that this is necessary. And I, and I just want to put that, put that out there, put it on the record.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on with the base premise, one of the base premises based on the job side of it, is that there is a local affordability gap, which is the difference in the cost of developing affordable units and the unit's value based on restricted affordable rents. Traditionally, the NEXUS study focused on very low income, but in this case, we broadened the NEXUS study to address all of the lower income levels. So just to point that out. The NEXUS study sets a, as I indicated before, a maximum fee. This would be the amount that it would take to really cover the complete gap. You can see that those fees are quite high. So traditionally, most jurisdictions do not charge the full amount of that local gap. So they typically charge only a portion. I think the sense is that if you charge this full amount, it would tend to make projects uncompetitive in the marketplace. And so it usually jurisdictions come in at a lower amount. The next, next slide shows based on information between 2010 and 2019, which is probably not completely representative of where we are in a pandemic market right now. But these are the types of developments that we are, we're most commonly seeing built in the unincorporated county. It shows lots and lots of warehouse and warehouse distribution being built. And again, in 2020 and 2021, we're banner years. So if we had that data, it might even be higher. We have seen traditionally a decent amount of retail and a small amount of office. And I don't know, post-pandemic, that, that might actually be going down from this data and this chart, and only the occasional hotel. So again, the point of the slide is that most of what we're building right now tends to be warehouse and some retail. This slide shows how the Housing Trust Fund Fee, what component it is of the overall cost to build certain prototype buildings. So for each prototype in the warehouse, industrial, retail, office, and hotel types, the dark blue, almost black on this, is the land cost. The medium blue is the construction cost. The light blue are indirect costs and financing. The yellow band is governmental fees. And the red sliver at the top is the cost of the housing fee. Kaiser Marston initially focused on, in their report, as you can see, on several Sacramento regional markets. They also did some, included some additional analysis of two other study areas, Study Area 1 and Study Area 2, based on some comments from the BIA asking for fee information. The bulk of those other areas do not collect Housing Trust Fund fees. It's only some of the outer Bay Area cities do. So that's just in there, some additional information about overall fee costs. So this slide is really where we're starting to get to the recommendations. Kaiser Marston did provide some upper limits of what they thought might be reasonable to charge based on their professional experience and based on the NEXUS study. They indicated that warehouse and industrial should probably not go above $2.00 a square foot. All other non-residential should not exceed $3.00 a square foot, and that we should be doing annual indexing. And so the bottom of the slide are the current staff recommendations. This is what we're coming in with today for your consideration.
Excuse me, LeAnn. Supervisor Serna?
Yes.
So I just want to make certain I understand this. The, I understand that the, the legally justifiable range that could be charged is pretty extensive. Kaiser Marston was asked to give staff their input about what they think is reasonable. That's what this chart represents, this table.
The top part of the chart is what they thought were the upper limits of reasonable. And then staff have actually made the recommendations on the bottom.
I see. So understanding the nexus, the way you've explained it, and understanding the types of jobs and the wages that come with the types of jobs, specifically for warehouse, why would warehouse be the lowest, 70 cents a square foot compared to the others?
Yeah, can I move to the next slide on the, kind of the indexing? So another factor that we took into account is what would have happened had the fees been indexed over time. So we were also sort of taking into account how the board prioritized and set fees back in its original 1992 work. I don't know how that relevant that is to you today.
Was that CPI? CPI indexed?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so I get that. So then you, so you kind of checked it against, you know, how much it should have grown if, if we had indexed annually based on CPI since 1992. You get to 64 cents, 70 cents is in that ballpark, correct? That's how you kind of did that?
Yes.
Now, what you didn't do, I don't think you did, is you probably didn't look at any of this index to the inflation of housing costs.
We did not.
If we did that, it'd probably be a very, very different story. So again, noting what you presented in terms of what has been the most activity that we've been seeing in recent years, and will probably likely continue to see, knock on wood, assuming the, the economy stays somewhat strong, in terms of warehouse development, that's going to continue for some times in places like Metro Airport. And given the fact that the wages associated with warehouse work compared to, say, research and development, office, even some aspects of commercial retail is low, and knowing what we know about how housing prices have skyrocketed. what we know about how housing prices have skyrocketed, and given the fact that we do have a lot of flexibility here in terms of that range, it seems to me one could argue pretty easily that maybe $0.70 in particular for warehouse is perhaps too low. Does that make sense?
I think that's a fair comment, and you're going to see that when we get to the Housing and Redevelopment Commission.
Okay.
Yes, you're not the only person to point that out.
Good.
Yes. So, yeah, so this just shows where the fees would be at if they had been indexed, which we took into account, for better or worse. This next slide just kind of shows where the fees are in relationship to the total development cost. And I think the warehouse and industrial and retail are around a half a percent of the total cost burden to build a building, whereas we have the office and hotel at a little over a percent. So there's, you know, the staff recommended fee aren't based on the exact percentage in terms of the total cost, if that makes sense. So we did take this to, as I indicated, the Planning Commission and the Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Planning Commission, in general, supported a fee increase. They felt that it should periodically be revisited, including perhaps having a sunset with a trigger to reassess. And they felt that the office fee should be reduced down to $2. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission felt that the fee on industrial should go up to $1.50 a square foot, and that the warehouse fee should go to closer to either $0.80 or $0.85, which they felt was closer to the average of the fees in the region. So in conclusion, staff absolutely recommends that we update modified fees to provide new gap financing for additional affordable housing. We think this can produce at least one to two additional projects per year. We tried to set somewhat balanced and reasonable fees in our recommendation. We indicate that the warehouse fee is lower than the city of Sacramento. Full sums have, that's the upper limit, that would be for smaller buildings only, and Elk Grove. The industrial and the retail are around a half a percent of total development costs, and the office and hotel represent just over 1%. And then finally, on the more mundane side, in the event that you are prepared to settle on something today and you do introduce an ordinance, I did want to read some additional findings into the record, just to get that clear. So if you could bear with me while I read this component, the board letter does have some staff recommendations, but I'm going to read this more detailed aspect. So our staff recommendation would be, if you adopt something, for the board to make the findings required by Government Code Section 66001, based upon the attached Housing Trust Fund NEXUS study, specifically pages 30 and 31, including as follows: that the purpose of the fee is to be used to construct affordable housing; that the use to which the fee will be put is to provide local gap funding for affordable housing projects; that there is a reasonable relationship between the fee's use and the type of development being constructed, as documented in the NEXUS study; that there is a reasonable relationship between the need for affordable housing and the project subject to the Housing Trust Fund fee, as documented in the NEXUS study; and that there is a reasonable relationship between the amount of the fee and the costs associated with the construction of affordable housing projects, as documented in the NEXUS study. And with that, I'd be available for questions or further comments, as are our consultant and other resources here.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. First of all, Chair, do we have speakers, do we know yet?
One speaker.
One speaker. In chambers or?
On the, well, we have one in chambers, and I believe we have one on the phone.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I am eager to hear, obviously, what our speakers have to share. But again, I want to thank staff for bringing this to us. I think this board is thirsty, like so many other governing bodies, to find and tap into resources for the provision of much-needed affordable housing, in this case, in our county. And I'm glad we're, in some respects, playing catch-up here. I guess better late than never. But again, I've already kind of pointed out where my mindset is relative to one of the development types that is being considered here in terms of an applicable fee for warehouse. I'm certainly not interested in making us less competitive. But again, knowing what I know about where the market is, where it's likely going to stay, and where it's likely going to go, at least for the foreseeable future, and also understanding the economics of wage rate that comes along with that development type. You know, I could see, you know, a dollar a square foot for warehouse being, well, obviously it could be justified because we have a lot of latitude there to even go much higher. But I understand this task that we've been given is to find that balance, and I appreciate that. But I mean, you know, another $0.30 a square foot, given the millions of square feet that we have left to develop, you know, that's at some point going to be a considerable difference to the overall trust fund. And so I would encourage this board to maybe be a little bit more bold, at least with regards to that, that particular aspect of the fee. Because, you know, we are in a crisis. I think everyone can admit that. And we should be doing everything we can to, in the course of balancing things, to also maximize resources for affordable housing. So, you know, I want to hear what my colleagues have to say as well, obviously, but that's where I'm at right now, is I think this is good, good place to start, but I could very easily support going as high as a dollar a square foot for warehouse.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Leanne, and appreciate all the work, your work, the work of your staff on this. With respect to the warehouse fee, I agree with Supervisor Serna. I think those are very good points. And I'm curious, did you say, so why didn't you take SHRA's, or I'm sorry, the Housing and Redevelopment Commission's recommendation to raise that a little higher on the warehouse fee?
Why did we not accept that?
Yes.
Well, I think to some degree, we had looked at what the staff recommendations were when we were developing them, but, so we simply forward the variety of comments that we've gotten through the process.
And then you don't have here, I know one of your outreach efforts was with the development community. Did they not, what were their comments about the fees?
Yeah. I would characterize generally, the advocates want much higher, and of course, the development interests want lower. I don't know that we have, that I can say.
Were there any, I'm wondering, were there any specific points, like there were, from the Planning Commission and from the Redevelopment Commission? Okay.
No, I don't really have formal correspondence representing all industries stating any particular dollar amounts.
And the other thing that just kind of, I mean, obviously, we're in the, I share Supervisor Serna's desire to, you know, take advantage of a resource here that will help us with our affordable housing crisis that we have, certainly. But in the context of our fee discussion, our workshop we had yesterday, I'm always very sensitive to seeing where we stack up with other, you know, neighboring jurisdictions. And I think certainly developers are cognizant of that as well. And I'm just looking at the office and hotel recommended fee, and that would certainly put us higher than any of the other jurisdictions, it looks like, in Sacramento County and in Plaster County as well. So I'm just, you know, I think the Planning Commission recommended reducing office fee to $2 to be more comparable to retail, certainly for both office and hotel. I'd be interested in exploring, perhaps making that fee a little bit lower, because we want to hit the sweet spot, right? We want to get the resource for more affordable housing, but not make the fees so cumbersome that, in the context of all the other fees that we charge in Sacramento County, that we aren't actually going to be deterring more investment and development in Sacramento County.
Certainly.
All right. Those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Nativi.
Couple of quick questions. So what about when properties convert from one category to the other? And we know we're steering some of that down, and, you know, how that plays itself out? So if they paid the fee, it's just a one-time fee, and they, whatever the use was at the time, if it stays that use, and it could work to the contrary. You may have, you know.
Right. So building indicates they do reassess when it goes to a higher value, but we do not refund when we go the other way.
Yeah, no, I trusted that, so, okay.
Kind of a one-way street.
And how does this apply to properties at Mather, probably not so much at McClellan, that are still, underlying land ownership lies with the county with long-term leases? Do they still pay the entirety of the fee?
When there's, my understanding is when there's a building pull, new building built, someone pays the fee.
On county property?
Actually, if it's a county facility on county property, I would need to check. I don't know if the county pays itself.
Troy, do you know?
I don't know.
I would have to, I would have to check. I don't believe so.
Well, I would just say, I mean, those are public projects, but if we're employing people, or rebuild the building, why do we exempt ourselves? Well, you know, our employees need housing like everybody else.
I would have to check. I'm not certain.
You know, I know, I, you know, again, if we don't have an answer today, but I just think it's key, and it kind of goes to the competitive marketplace, too.
In that particular instance, that would be the city of Rancho Cordova, and those funds would not go to the county or SHRA.
Okay. Well, for currently on the Commerce Center, but a lot contemplated south of the runway someday, so what happens there?
South of the runway, that's still in unincorporated Sacramento County. If it's a new building, it would be subject to the fee.
If it was ours as well, we pay the fee as part of our.
That's the one component we need to research, if it's a county-owned building on county facility.
Ratchell Complex, another example. You know, I haven't built anything recently, but we own the land, and, you know, we may build there or not. And then what about McClellan? Most of that's gone into private ownership, McClellan.
Most of that is in private ownership, so it'd be subject to the fee.
Again, I just think as we look at this, and again, you know, public projects are public dollars, but it doesn't, you know, if we're talking about the overall need here for folks that are employed in whatever aspect of the workforce, but particularly those that are maybe on the lower end of the pay scale, it would seem to me that we ought to subject ourselves to this as well, and just, you know, as a consideration. Well, I think about the airport, Sac International Airport, Mather Airport. To your point, Troy, if it's on the flight line, it's in the city of Rancho Cordova, but it's still on our airport property, and we control the outcomes.
Right. Well, I mean, I think it would really be based on what jurisdiction it's in, where the fees would go, but whether we charge county buildings, I would have to check.
Well, and let me give you one other example. Again, I think it's a pretty prime example. Everything on the west side of Mather, that's in the unincorporated area, that may be redeveloped into other flight line operations and/or that we may hold the land in long-term leases and/or maybe, who knows? I don't know if the county will ever build the suit, but I just, I think that as we're looking at this, and I don't know if it was clear or not, and that's why I'm asking the question, is that there are some significant opportunities in some of these categories where the county, over time, may be the landlord in the underlying ground, or may not be, but, and if we build our own buildings, we ought to, you know, it comes out of the project cost, but that's what we're telling the private sector to do.
Right.
So again, I'm not, you know, I don't expect Leanne or Troy to have the answer, but I raised the question because I think it needs to be clear before we adopt whatever we're going to adopt here.
Yeah, we would have to check. I don't know if I can answer that here today. It sounds like you're going to discuss modifying some of the fees. We certainly anticipated that. And in the event you do do that, our recommendation was going to be that you hold this over to the 14th, put it on the consent agenda, so that we could turn around any final material, so that could provide us, if you just do decide to not accept staff recommendation exactly the way it is, that could provide us some opportunity to get answers to those questions.
You're going to have four members here on the 14th.
The assumption would be that you have settled on what your fee is, and we are simply introducing a clean ordinance for the record, that you would have the discussion today, and it would be clear and settled as to what you want the amounts to be.
So, and if I could appreciate that, that reflects on what we might do here. But I wanted to, the other question I wanted to ask, and then we're seeing this with Project Room Key, the agencies involved, obviously, planning to the extent that there's any planning requirements in the unincorporated area, but actually potentially converting hotels or motels to a permanent residential use. And it would seem to me that, you know, if they fall into a higher fee category, I trust that the newer ones wouldn't be the ones that are, you know, going to be converted. But we talk about accrediting, but, you know, if that property has paid in, and we're actually doing a project at some future date, and this has been 30 years since we've adopted this fee almost, but as a county, I'm just curious, again, I'm not trying to overthink it, but, you know, if you put the hotels into a higher fee category, and then we're scrambling for housing, so we're looking at some of the older hotels or motels as being converted.
Well, I think the presumption there was when the hotel was built maybe 30 years ago, there were, there was a demand for housing then, and so it went into that housing, and there were workers there for 30 years. And so that fee has sort of been amortized over time.
Okay.
Down to zero. Yeah.
Okay, so that's how.
Yeah. And then if it's converting to a residential use, particularly if it's an affordable residential, it would go to the residential side of the fee, but affordable projects are exempt.
Right.
Because we don't charge affordable projects to build affordable housing, so.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, commenting certainly on some of the points raised previously, I could see going a bit higher, I mean, on the warehouse part of it. I don't know that it would necessarily go to a dollar, but I do think that, you know, if you fell somewhere in between, kind of where the commission recommendation was, the $0.80 or $0.85, it puts it more in line with, you know, the other aspects of development in different parts of the region. And it would, I think, to Supervisor Serna's point, would, you know, at the square footage that's being provided for, could, you know, be more robust and return to the fund. So I would certainly be willing to entertain that. On the hotel, I mean, we haven't seen too many hotels, and I would just say that if you encourage hotels and motels in the unincorporated area, there is another revenue stream that comes that allows this community to support a whole lot of different endeavors through the transient occupancy tax. And I will say, I had a conversation as recently as, earlier this week, about conversion under Project Room Key, but what gets lost in part of that, you may gain housing permanently supported, but then the revenue stream that comes to this county, this general fund discretionary goes away, and, you know, that may not be the most prominent aspect of the conversation, but you do lose that tax revenue that comes directly to the county for this board to, through our budget process, to direct. So it may be that we want to continue to not be too out of sync, so we don't discourage some of the, you know, facilities that are lodging, that, you know, bring visitor dollars here. On the other hand, certainly be real when those go in, that there are going to be hotel workers and service workers in those establishments, they're going to need housing, so they should be paying their fair share. So those are my comments.
Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to point something out, just doing some quick math here. It wasn't presented as part of staff's presentation, but I think it's a bit telling. And it's, what I did is I took the recommended fees per square foot and divided by the total amount that Kaiser Marston tells us through the NEXUS study, we could, if we wanted to, charge. And so those percentages are as follows: where we'd only be charging 6% of what we could charge for office, 18% of what we could charge for hotel, 13% of what we could charge for R&amp;D, 3% for what we could charge for retail, 3% for manufacturing, and 4% for warehouse. So in terms of any adjustments that individual board members may be thinking about, increases, decreases, I think it's important to note that we are well below, well below, with the recommended fees in this board letter, from what we could legally charge. And again, acknowledging the fact that this is a balancing act, and we've got to, you know, keep our thumb on the pulse of being competitive, at the same time maximizing affordable housing resources. But I think that's a good way to kind of look at it. Thank you.
Okay, maybe this is a good time to take public comment while we think about it for a couple minutes. And so we'll start with the Hero O'Caro. And so we'll start with the Hiro Okaro. Good evening. Thank you for waiting patiently.
Most patient person in the room.
I think so.
My name is Adri O'Quinn. I'm the Policy Director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance. And first, we'd like to thank the board for taking this very important move to increase the non-residential affordable housing fee, but we must urge necessity for bolder actions. Affordable housing, the affordable housing crisis in Sacramento County is dire, as in the previous presentation, housing and homelessness is the number one issue, wanting action by the board of supervisors to move towards. There are few constituents who would disagree that now is the time to build more housing for individuals who are paid the lowest income. The California Housing Partnership 2021 Housing Needs Report identified that 58,383 low-income renter households in Sacramento don't have access to an affordable home. And the county's housing element requires planning to accommodate an additional 4,466 very-low and 2,692 low-income households. As a result, the county should seek to better align the fees to ensure the amounts can significantly address the gap funding needed for local affordable housing developers. At a minimum to start, the county must align fees with Keister Martin Associates' recommendation to increase the warehouse and industrial fee from 70 cents and $1 respectively to at least $2 per square foot, comparable with commercial retail fees, as these industries have similar impacts on the low-wage workforce. In addition, as recommended by KMR, all other non-residential development fees should be increased to at least $3 per square foot. While we commend the county on moving to add an annual index for inflation, the fees supporting the annual Affordable Housing Trust Fund must be biannually assessed for efficacy to support the affordable housing pipeline, namely the 1,400 affordable homes that must be annually constructed to meet the arena in the unincorporated county. If a biannual review determines insufficient housing production results from the fee, it should trigger a reassessment of the fee, given the NEXA study revealed the impact of non-residential development could justify fees between $15 and $47 per square foot. So every affordable project for individuals and families to make a low income requires local gap financing. While state and federal funds are a part of the capital resources needed to finance affordable housing, local funds are essential to leveraging these funding sources. Having a reliable source of funding that is stable and increases over time is important for affordable housing developers to forecast and maximize the amount of funding for affordable housing developments, and so we, our region can be actively able to compete at the state and federal level. Again, we commend the county for taking this review of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we urge the county to meet this moment and increase the fee to sufficiently and meaningfully impact the affordable housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have one person on the phone.
Yes.
Could you please transfer the caller? Hello caller?
Yes, hello.
Hello. You are in the meeting. Please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Hey, hello. My name is Dean Dolbin. I live in South Sacramento. Thank you for this opportunity. I urge rejection of this hearing item. Nothing in this document comprehensive evidence of the overall success of past efforts in Sacramento County to fund very low-income housing, which must also include accountability and cost-effective actions needed to provide this housing at the lowest possible cost to get the. My name is Dean Dolbin. I'm calling from South Sacramento. I urge rejection of this hearing item. Nothing in this document's comprehensive evidence of the overall success of past efforts in Sacramento County to fund, fund very low-income housing, which must also include accountability and cost-effective actions needed to provide this housing at the lowest possible cost to get the greatest value for the money spent. Perhaps money and current fees already provided can meet this need. Perhaps they should be lowered. Actions taken in the past show such housing is constructed at higher costs than that for similarly provided housing. I do not have time allowed to, in this commentary to discuss this, but these facts are well-known. Those who support this type of ordinance assume the intrinsic value to provide such housing that is not supported by facts and ignores other issues. They also hide the impact of government taking more money from a select group in order to avoid objections from other groups, in this case, more money from non-residential construction, and hope those who are concerned with residential construction will be quiet expecting this type of increase will never happen to them, a divide-and-conquer technique. Unfortunately, those who must pay these increased costs will transfer their costs to their customers, so all are affected by these fees. In effect, government redistributes money from one group without providing accountability for measuring the presumed success of efforts to help all of Sacramento and just not certain special interest groups. More money does not guarantee more low-income housing. Nothing in this prevents those who develop and build low-income housing from charging more for doing the same or even less than what was done in the past, now that more money is available for them to take from government. Insofar as addressing how low-income housing needs can be best resolved, that is a more complex issue. However, past actions have proven that throwing money at this issue have not been successful, as evidenced by constant demands for more and more government money to be spent, more money taken by government in various fees, taxes, and other means, and ever-increasing rates, and the emphasis on emotion to justify past, current, and future actions. We must not let Sacramento become a place that penalizes individuals and businesses in their efforts to be more productive. This destroys a sense of community and drives opportunity away from Sacramento in favor of those communities that values all residents. Thank you for allowing me to speak this way, and I hope you consider my views.
Thank you. All right. I believe that, does that conclude our?
That concludes your public comment. There are no other callers in the queue.
Thank you Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. Question for Leanne. The way the recommendation reads is that it would be, if we adopt the fee schedule, either as recommended or with some adjustment, that it would be indexed moving forward, correct?
Yes.
CPI annually?
It's McGraw-Hill. It's specified in the ordinance, but yes.
I assume that that index as is, does not take into account housing cost?
Let me see if our consultant is here and whether he would, no.
Okay.
David, are you here?
Hello, this is David Dozma with Kaiser Marston. And no, that index does not take into account a housing cost explicitly. It's based on construction costs.
So E and R for Bay Area?
It's the 20, 20-city average, is my recollection. And it's, the reason for that index choice is that your residential affordability fee uses it.
That said, it doesn't mean that we couldn't have a weighted average hybrid index that took into account construction cost, but also took into account housing cost, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think it would be incumbent upon us to be a little more thoughtful than simply, and this is no criticism of the consultant, but this is a fee that's intended to build us a treasury that we could use for affordable housing. And if there is a, kind of an institutional disconnection in the way the index would work, that doesn't evaluate, doesn't consider the actual cost of housing, then I think what we do is we could actually find ourselves 20 years down the line saying, oh, it was indexed, but it was indexed artificially low for its intended purpose, which is to help produce more affordable housing. So I'm not prepared to suggest what the formula looks like for some kind of hybrid index, but I do think it's worth considering. That's one comment slash suggestion I have. I certainly respect some of the comments that have been made thus far by my colleagues and Supervisor Desmond. I certainly appreciate the sensitivity, especially to office, and I believe it was hotel that you suggested be reduced. But I certainly could not support this today and would be forced to vote no with a clear explanation as to why, if we're going to go in the direction of reducing from the starting point. I just think it's, again, to my point earlier about the small fraction of what we're, what's being recommended from what we could charge, and given the fact that our, you know, we're so far behind the eight ball when it comes to affordable housing in the county, I just, I couldn't feel comfortable at all going backwards on these numbers. In terms of the warehouse fee and to Supervisor Natoli's kind of casual suggestion that maybe we split the baby here between what SHRA, what their commission had suggested and what is in front of us here, I still believe a 30 cent increase in the whole scheme of things is very, very, very modest. And, you know, I don't think that going another 30 cents a square foot is going to break the bank necessarily for most warehouse construction. And again, arguably, the nexus is stronger than anywhere else here in terms of the development types to warehouse than some of the other uses. So, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion that we adopt staff's recommendation with the adjustment to warehouse to a dollar a square foot. And I don't know if, and I guess I'm looking at June for this one, whether or not we could give direction in a motion to have staff explore this hybrid index, maybe bring that back later, if that's, if that's possible?
Yes, you absolutely can do that.
Okay. So that would be my, my motion. And again, to clarify the index part, it would simply to be explore, mathematically explore an index that was more closely tied, or at least acknowledged the fact that housing costs should be a component part to how we index.
Second.
We have a motion on the table. And so with that motion, we're going to come back and discuss the index on the 14th. Is that the idea?
Hopefully when I'm back.
Or, yeah, I.
Early next year?
We should clarify it.
I think we would have to separate them, that on the 14th, we would come back, if you all support the motion, we would come back on the 14th and introduce a new ordinance, and we'd have to come back at a later time to discuss the indexing.
Correct.
Supervisor Frost?
Yes.
This is David Villanueva. Troy has an answer to Supervisor Natoli's question about whether or not the county pays fees?
Yes, Todd was able to do some research, and it indicates that if it is exclusive, if it's county construction on county property and exclusively for government use, it would be exempt. If it's not exclusively for government use, then it would be subject to the fee.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. So we have a motion and a second by Supervisor Kennedy on the table for a dollar, raising warehouse and accepting staff recommendation on all the other fees. Please vote. Unanimous vote. And this will come back after the first of the year to discuss the index.
So we're coming back on the, at your next agenda next week with this piece on the consent agenda, and then staff are going to report back at a later date when there's a full board on a further amendment around a different index.
All right.
All right. And thank you so much. Very appreciative.
Thank you for all your work.
Very appreciative.
Thank you, Leanne. And thank you Supervisor Serna. Okay, we have one more item.
Okay. Item five is the set salaries for the elected department heads, assessor, district attorney, and sheriff for the 2023 through 2027 term of office.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Joseph Shea here, representing the Department of Personnel Services. Per county code, the salaries for Sacramento County elected department heads are to be set six months prior to the general election. The next election for the assessor, the district attorney, and the sheriff will be held in June 2022. Therefore, the salaries for elected officials are required to be set by board action in a public session by December 31st. The data collected this year suggests that there be no changes made to the salaries for the Sacramento County elected officials for the 2023 through 2027 term. DPS respectfully request your approval for the resolution. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. We don't have any questions. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. So we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond and a second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
That was the easiest presentation you've ever made, Joseph.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Would be your county executive comments?
Just thank you on the Housing Trust Fund.
I think it's going to be good, go to a good cause. And the next item is board comments. And I have comments from Supervisor Serna.
Just that I won't be here next week to join you. I'll be here in spirit, and I want to just take the opportunity to wish my colleagues and staff a wonderful Christmas, and I'll see you in 2022.
Hope you have a wonderful trip.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. And I see no other comments, and so our work is done for the day and this meeting is adjourned.